It is 6:03 on March the 4th. This is the Huntley Community School District School Board meeting. We're going to start out with a special meeting. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Gentry, Mr. Darren, Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quaglian.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mr. Mayarino, Mr. Crady.
Here.
Okay, we have a forum to start. So I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session at 6:03 for the items enumerated in the agenda. Have a second? Second from Mr. Troy, was it? Oh, Mr. Crady, apologize. Troy's throwing his voice again. Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Mayarino.
Yes.
Mr. Crady.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Darren, Mr. Quaglian.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Okay. Motion passes. We'll go into closed session for a little bit. All right, we'll start.
Can only get better, guys.
(laughing).
I used to bring a can of pop this morning to these people.
Okay. I had to get that one out.
I know. It was good. We all save it.
Okay, we're back from closed session from the special meeting. It is 6:20. Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Darren, Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quaglian.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mrs. Mayarino.
Here.
Mr. Crady.
Here.
Okay. All right, can we stand for the slides in the lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item six is public comment. Do we have public comments specific to the special meeting? Yeah, I would say it would be just regular public comment before the second meeting, okay? So if there's no public comment specific to this meeting, we'll move to item seven, which is the 2021 calendar amendment. Ms. Lombard, what do you got?
So in your packet, you'll see that there is a memo requesting another amendment to the calendar. As you know, there has recently been a change to the COVID clinic vaccination number two that our pod is holding next week. And that change has been from Thursday, March 11th, to Friday, March 12th. And so while we recognize that another change to the calendar is not ideal for families, it's necessary to be able to allow in an efficient manner that second dose for not only our educators here in our district, but also within the county. And that our two-day is being condensed down to a one-day clinic. This change will help kind of streamline that vaccination rollout, but it also does help alleviate some of the concern about any potential side effects that next day as people would be coming into work and working with the students and substitutes or any asynchronous type work going on. And so while there is a change that we are recommending here, I do feel that it is beneficial for the students. It's just taking that Thursday institute, which would have been a non-student attendance and flip-flopping that with the 12th. So the number of days the students are in next week and in total in the calendar will remain the same. And we do anticipate that this would be our final amended calendar recommendation. Can't promise that, but do believe that this should be the last one. Any questions?
Any questions? Nope, it's a worthy adjustment to the calendar. So if there are no questions, then I'll make a motion to approve the 2021 calendar amendment as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Crady. Saw his lips move. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Crady.
Yes.
Mr. Darren, Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Quaglian.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Mayarino.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Item eight is memorandum. Dr. Zer, do you want to present anything on this?
That's the memorandum of understanding there for the bus driver retention bonus.
Okay.
Does that feel any question, if there are any?
Does anybody have any questions concerning memorandum of understanding for our drivers? All right, if not, I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the HESPA Union for the retention bonus as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gentry. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Quaglian.
Yes.
Mr. Crady.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Mayarino.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Item nine, a second memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the HESPA Union, once again related to our bus drivers. If that is there, anything you want to present further?
This is to allow the district to subcontract if it was necessary to outside services. So we worked very collaboratively with HESPA in creating this. That's something we need to negotiate, as stated in the previous HESPA contract. So this could be effective through the end of the school year at the time.
Right, and it terminates at the end of the school year?
That's correct.
Correct, okay. Anybody else have any questions? Doctors there? All right, it's now I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the HESPA Union as it relates to the bus driver subcontract as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mrs. Mayarino. Can we have roll call?
Mrs. Mayarino. Yes. Mr. Crady.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Darren, Mr. Quaglian.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item ten is to adjourn the special meeting. I'll make a motion to adjourn the special meeting at 6:26. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mrs. Melendi. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passed. We're adjourned from our special meeting. Move on to our regular meeting. So I will call to order the Huntley Community School District Board of Education meeting at 6:27. Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quaglian.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mrs. Mayarino.
Here.
Mr. Crady.
Here.
Mr. Darren.
Okay, six present. Quorum, item two is public comment. Now we can read.
Sure, we have three.
Okay.
The first one is from Sarah DeBoe. Dr. Owen, board members, I'm writing to you today to express my concern about our proposed start date of March 15th, five days a week, full day start date. I'm wondering what the rush is to get kids in full-time before spring break. I have several students who have mentioned that they will be traveling for break. Will these families be quarantining after? I've made the choice not to travel since last March to keep myself and my family safe. The several families choose to travel, that puts the health of myself and my family in jeopardy. Being an elementary teacher, I am not opposed to having students return. I'm so happy to have students back in the classroom in person, but this needs to be done in a safe way. The AM PM hybrid allows for social distancing. Currently, I have six students in the morning session and nine in the afternoon session. When all students return five days a week, I will have a classroom of 16 students who will stay in the classroom all day long for seven and a half hours with minimal movement. Is that best practice? This proposed start date of March 15th will also not allow the vaccine that I received February 11th and March 12th to become fully effective. The choice is not prioritizing the health of teachers, students, and their families. I was also recently diagnosed with cancer, so my health is of the utmost concern right now. I feel that the start date should be postponed one to two weeks after spring break in order to avoid potential transmission of COVID-19 due to travel. Thank you for your time, Mrs. Sarah DeBoe. The next one is from Kim Ficetti. Good evening, board members. I wanted to start out by addressing the rush to full-time in-person learning for elementary students that Dr. Owen is pushing through. We all want to know and know full-time is the goal of students, but rushing the start on the 15th without a solid foundation will lead us backwards. It seems as though asking the community to carpool during a pandemic, begging for people to be supervisors and bus drivers, is not the best of our students' education or safety. If we were to trust the district to keep our kids safe during a pandemic with full time days, we deserve to have everything well thought out and not rushed. For example, District 300 told their community a month ahead of their return to five days a week. Crystal Lake is starting April 5th. Where did the sudden rush come from after being so calculated this whole time? My second question, my second question is why put such time and effort into the vaccine clinic to get those students who wanted it and want to be safe for a full return just to negate the effectiveness by making teachers go back full time just after receiving the vaccine two days prior? It takes two weeks for the vaccine to be fully protect someone, not two days. This played a part into the two surrounding districts waiting to go five days. Why not Huntley? D-300 also tests their teachers weekly and has an optional test for students who have to leave with symptoms. The parents can take them to designated school to receive a rapid test. Why is Huntley not utilizing this to have an extra safeguard in place? If Dr. Rowan wants to go full time, then again, everything should be solid and well thought out, not scrambling last minute to try and be the first one. This is not a race to no one wins from a rushed plan. Also wanted to point out the use of gyms, multipurpose rooms, larger labs, et cetera, to now move elementary students again after just finding out the routine and a balance. Learning in a gym or multipurpose room is not conducive learning environment. What about those students in the back trying to hear their teacher that has a mask on, trying to project in a gym? Those teachers also have to move all their belongings to teach in a new space with little time, as well as having to now plan for full days, which is different than what they've been planning for. Another factor is transportation. It just doesn't seem right to deny people transportation because they decided full time works for their family when maybe the AM PM did not. Dr. Row said that this was for the working parent, but denying transportation to some because they want their kid full time, cannot drive to work, drive due to work, doesn't seem to help the working parent. I understand this is a numbers game, but denying families certain services doesn't seem fair to the taxpayer. Another survey asked those remote if they were interested in full time and could help to see the numbers to see if full time plan can work for all who are interested. If another two weeks are needed to accomplish this and have spring break to hammer out details, that would be a good innovative direction to accommodate families of the district. It's exciting to be at the point where we're full time is the next step, but take the necessary time and preparation to make sure the kids are safe. And the last one is from Star Underwood. I'm very disappointed in our district for sending our children back to school full time so soon. If we don't have an adequate plan or staffing for kids, or for how kids will be bused because of the shortage, or how elementary school kids will eat lunch, why the push now? Who are these people that will be monitoring our children eating lunch? What type of certification and background checks will be done to ensure the safety of our kids? I also don't understand the push for returning prior to spring break. The hybrid schedule as well as the remote did work for my children, and I do sympathize for ones it does not work for. However, if we don't have enough classroom space in actual classrooms to have all kids safely attend, then we should not be going back full time now. I work and keep a mask on for around nine hours a day. It's a struggle for myself. How are kids going to keep them on for seven days without even a mask break? My son also has a hard time sitting still and now keeping him in a classroom for prolonged period at a desk. I'm concerned how this will affect his behavior and therefore his learning going forward. Schools becoming far more institutionalized and parents that are pushing for their return will now be complaining about how the school is handling the return and will just want more or less restrictions from the district. I'm interested to see how it will go with small children being expected to stay the majority of the day in their classroom, how PE, recess, and the mask breaks will look. My son enjoys the freedom of doing his specials at home with the ability to move around and not be assigned to a dot, and now they'll have greater restrictions at school for the safety of all. I understand, but I'm sincerely sorry to say that it's going to look a lot more like an institutional yard time. I feel like kids should be getting more hours in school, but there's no reason to eat or do specials like PE and music, which poses significant risk to them and their families. I'm really hoping the district proves me wrong and that they're able to keep everyone safe and do it correctly without cutting corners. Thank you, Star Underwood.
Okay, thank you very much, all three, for your comments. We appreciate you expressing your concerns. With that, we'll move on to item three, which is revision and adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add or revise to the agenda? All right, if not, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented with no changes. We can do this through a voice call. So those in favor, say aye.
I'll second.
You do have a second. I just like to jump the gun on all this stuff, so, okay. Mr. Troy, second. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're into the agenda. Item four, curriculum and instruction. Mr. Garin is absent, so Mr. Gentry or Mr. Troy, you can flip, we'll lead.
Sir?
Sir?
All right.
You're the vice president, I'll let you handle that.
Oh, good. Curriculum and instructions, first item up is 4.1, return to school update, Dr. Rowan.
My pleasure, sir.
Just share your screen. TV?
In Zoom.
Yeah, there to go to the TV. Thank you. All right. If you're not using technology, you're not having problems with technology, so thanks for the patience. So I'm excited to share the next phase of our return to learn plan. This is something that if you, everyone's been paying close attention all year long. You know, returning to school, our decision-making process has remained consistent throughout the school year. Our primary focus has been and continues to be on safety. When we're not confident that we can be in school, we haven't been in school. There's a lot of meticulous planning and preparation that goes into this is not something that is done that's taken lightly, nor do we ever cut corners with our planning when we're talking about our community's children. So let me go through and share some of the details. We shared with our community on Monday of this week that if we were able to secure the necessary routes for transportation, that we would be bringing a discussion forward tonight to discuss starting the school year, restarting the school year, full in-person K-5 days on March 15th. Now I go through some of the details, but I am happy to share with you that we have secured the necessary drivers and do fully intend to return on March 15th with full day in-person learning for our K through five building. But I have lots of details to share. So tonight I'll cover the details of that, that K-5 full-time expansion of our learning model. I'm also going to review some of the details of the 612 hybrid extension, as well as cover some of our special programs, because I know those communities are extremely interested in how they play into our plans. So early childhood, special services, and dual language will also be covered specifically tonight, as well as cover some just additional considerations, topics that I anticipate are areas of discussion, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. You know, as has been our aim all year, we obviously continue to, our goal is to return to the fullest extent possible, and whatever normal is during a worldwide pandemic. It's remained a constant challenge. The target, although it is not quite moving as much as it is, living within the guidelines that we must live within, remain a challenge as we work against those public health guidance, as well as the metrics that we've been chasing all year. I'm going to share the details of where the metrics stand today, just to give you a little insight as to where we are, as that's been a major factor in our decision-making process throughout the school year. I want to commend our staff, you know, and my staff, as well as, you know, the teachers and our transportation department specifically for what they've done over the last few weeks to help us get to this point and overcome one of the major hurdles we faced over the course of the school year. The national transportation shortage of bus drivers is very real, and we've definitely felt that during this crisis. But kudos to Ms. Lombard and our transportation team, Laura Hooper and Jen Heinrich, for moving a lot of schedules and making things happen for our students. So we're now reaching the point where the metrics are good. We've had a community support for a long time about returning, and our internal adjustments are ready to take a big step forward for us. And as we communicate on the 19th, we aim to move forward to that five-day in-person learning, and the date will be March 15th. So the metrics specifically, we've seen steady decreases over the recent weeks with those metrics, really since January, and that was much to the surprise of the nation that our numbers continue to fall through some of the winter months where we expected them to be higher. While we continue to have cases in school, yes, our mitigation efforts are preventing that spread and preventing them from becoming an outbreak. That has not occurred during the school year. And the continuation of our efforts at six feet of separation in all of our elementary classrooms, as well as our secondary classrooms to the best of our ability exist and are in place. And while we wish we could expand 612 further than we are, some of the guidelines that we must adhere to in that spacing simply cannot be done as it can on the elementary level, and we'll be maintaining that AB schedule, although we've found ways to expand it and service our neediest learners in the process. And of course, the remote option remains available to all families that desire it. So this is a snapshot of where our metrics are currently. You'll notice that all four of the areas are currently meeting. Let me move my screen here so I can actually click the link. Might be quick. All right, I'm going to pop out of this and do it the old-fashioned way. Bear with me, please. All right. So as I share this screen, just to hop on the county's website to show you where things stand, you'll notice, keep this kind of below, where our current incidence rate is, my screen is blocking here. All right, here we go. Our current incidence rate is 10, so the 14 number has been the threshold. This has been one of the most evasive metrics that we've been trying to meet for some time. But over the course of the last several days, we've been under that threshold, which is very, very good news. The positivity rate currently sits, as of today, it was 4.9 a little earlier, 5.3 as of this evening. Again, the eight marker is where that red line is, so we're far below that. Our hospitalization, sitting at three to four, it's been three for several days, it's a four of today, and our total cases continues to decline, 208 total, and youth cases down at 37. Back to the actual plan. So our metrics look very good, which is really a key factor. That's been a major decision-making tool that we've used over the course of the year. Yes, we were not 100% in line with them when we chose to come back on January 25th, but as we've gone through the year, you know, I'll echo again, we have to learn and adapt and learn and evolve. And we've learned, and the CDC mitigation efforts that we have in place acknowledge what we know, that our schools are safe places for groups of students to gather and learn if we follow those mitigations, the six feet of separation being one of the keys. But the fact that we have those mitigations in place and the metrics are all in favor are really what's precipitating this move. So let's remind you of those mitigation efforts. Again, it's correct use of masks, which is probably the most important factor of all, use of masks. Our kids, I can't say enough how wonderful our kids, our students have done in terms of following these and adhering to our request to wear masks. It has not been an issue. From elementary all the way through high school, our students have really risen to the occasion and done exceptionally well. The social distancing to the largest extent possible, we've got the appropriate spacing in the classrooms to the best of our ability, and the cafeterias are spacing broken out by groups of 50, where students are primarily in desks, not gathered at tables facing one another. And then, of course, the spacing in the hallways are closely monitored, and students are doing a great job. So hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette also is key. Hand sanitizer stations, as we have in the boardroom, are fully equipped. Hand sanitizer is readily available, as well as hand washing routines that will take place on a more regular basis now that students will be in for a longer day, so we don't just rely on hand sanitizer. Because if your hands are like mine, they're cracking because of how much hand sanitizer we use. Cleaning and disinfection, as we discussed last month, we've upping our contract custodial efforts in order to ensure that our classrooms are cleaned and with increase of students. That's something that we should expect another increase in order for us to meet the demand, especially of some of our lunches we're eating, have been taking place in the classroom. We'll have to up our efforts again. But it's all part of the expectation when you're returning here. And then contract tracing, our nurses are fantastic. I know I've said that a number of times, but they really are truly fantastic people. They're doing an excellent job. So now to the details that I know we're very interested in. All K-5 students who opted for in-person or hybrid learning back in December will attend school full day. Now, these are the students that have been attending half-days up to this point, since January 25th. So those students will transition to a full day. School bell and transportation times will mirror that typical school day, so it'll be 8:30 to 3:25 or 3:30. I know I shared at one point in our communication with the community that we were possibly investigating shifting some of those bell times. And I want to be clear that we are not going to do that. I shared that to ensure that transparency in our decision-making, so everyone knew everything was on the table in order to take the necessary steps forward. But that is not going to be the case. It's the regularly scheduled bell that they're used to prior to this year. Students will eat lunch at school every day. They've been doing so in our secondary schools every day since January 25th. It's gone extremely well. In-person specials will run as typical for the full day schedule, so our students that are in person, back to having music and art and PE each day. And then our remote students will continue with their current full day schedules. Now, the only change that our remote family should experience is when specials occur. Otherwise, their full day, as we promised them, has been untouched. However, when you're rebuilding the special schedule, when it occurs during the remote day may have to shift in order to accommodate everybody else in that school and when that's going to happen in person. But if we're talking about a 30, 30 to 45 minute window each day, it won't be a dramatic impact. And then remote students, of course, will continue with their normal schedule as they have since January otherwise. In order to achieve our goal of bringing students back to a full day, some classrooms did have to move to larger spaces. There have only been a, there's a handful of classes did have to change location in each building. One or two buildings didn't have to move any classrooms. Some of the larger spaces that they had to move into, some classrooms moved to an art room or a music room because they're bigger and can fit the students with the adequate space. A small handful of classrooms are in multipurpose rooms, which again, is just a larger classroom. It's not a gymnasium. We have zero classes in a gym. No students will be learning there during the gym, in the gymnasium where, as our public commenter mentioned, where noise is going to be that much of a factor. Recession will occur either before or following lunch, as they did in a typical school day. Students will sanitize on their way out of the building, they'll sanitize on the way back into the building. Masks will be required if a student is in close proximity to one another or they're playing on the playground equipment, masks will be required. However, this could be an optimal time for a mask break, and the elementary supervisors that we mentioned in the past, or last month, will be out and supporting our students out there and can help coordinate that. So specials specifically for K-5, all in-person specials will run, as I said, on a typical day, but they may be delivered in different places, though. As I said, some of our classrooms have taken over the art room or the music room, so some specials will be delivered in the students' classroom. But I think what we have to focus on is our students are getting the arts exposure and the ability to broaden their horizons from what they've gotten during the school year. And concessions have to be made when we're living in a worldwide pandemic in order to make things happen like this. Students will follow mitigation strategies when using any specials, equipment or materials. Sanitize before class begins, sanitize before it's over or as it's over, and the teachers will, if there's any shared material that has to be used, will of course be cleaning that to the best of their ability between sessions. So some of the logistics and safety things that I think people are interested in hearing. As I said, some classrooms did have to move to maintain that six feet of separation. Again, it varies by school and class size. For instance, as an example, Martin is able to handle lunch in the cafeteria in a gym and doesn't have to eat in the classroom, whereas most others had to do the classroom. But Martin has the benefit of an enormous cafeteria and more multipurpose rooms that PE can spread around to, so they have access to the cafeteria and gym. And whereas McCabins Cafeteria just doesn't compare to the size of Martin's. So spaces, but well, I think this is also a really important point. Any space where a classroom has been shifted, has been outfitted with all the necessary technology and connections and instructional materials that a regular classroom would have. So that multipurpose room is really serving as just a larger classroom space. Some of them are carpeted, some of them are tiled, but then again, the majority of classrooms, I believe, around the country are tiled. And I think we live in a land of luxury in the fact that most of our classrooms are carpeted. Regardless of where lunch is held, those mitigation strategies will be followed. Students will be unmasked during lunch, but they're also six feet apart, not facing one another, across the table from one another. If they're in a cafeteria, they'll be one-sided. If they're in a cafeteria, they'll be one-sided and no one directly across from them and six feet apart. When lunch spaces are dispersed in the classroom, this is where the extra cleaning will come in and we'll have to rev up our efforts to ensure the classrooms are cleaned in the evening. I mean, we have to understand and be realistic that when our youngest students are in the classroom, messes happen. But at the same time, you know, Mr. Van Causic has built out to the year, the life cycle of our carpets, and in order to maintain that, we've got to take care of them properly as that down the road could be an added expense. So we'll increase our cleaning efforts to ensure that our carpets are not, the food that gets in there doesn't become an odor issue or shorten their lifespan. And as I mentioned, last month, we talked about, we brought the new job description for elementary supervisors, where we changed that title from lunchroom supervisor, where it's not just monitoring the cafeteria and the playground. These elementary supervisors are going to be assisting throughout the day, helping with car line and bus drop-off in the mornings, walking kids to and from some of their specials to help the teachers out. And so a lot of those jobs, responsibilities were shared amongst teachers as well as those extra support staff, like our instructional coaches, R T I facilitators, that we put back in the classroom. So the extra staff just is, they're not there anymore because we've had to spread ourselves as thin as we have to make this work. And the elementary supervisors, that's a very positive, a very positive thing. Our community heeded the call and came to accept those jobs. And I know that a commenter mentioned something about the background checks. All of our employees go through a background check process. They're fully vetted before we bring them on. When you're working with children, that's step number one. Now shifting to secondary. As previously announced, our secondary students began on Wednesdays of this week. So this week, Group A attended school on Wednesday, and then Group B goes to two days. High school to high school shifted to their late start is back to eight AM where it typically is during a normal school year, followed by their eight-period day. It's not a block on Wednesdays. And our middle school follows the same normal schedule, just we have students in place and it's also not a block. This is something that we're going to pay very close attention to because I recognize that the shift at the secondary level puts an additional strain on families to figure out what's going on this week with my child. So from the district level to the building level to the classroom level will be a coordinated effort to ensure that our community's children know which day they're supposed to attend. And what happens behind the scenes that nobody really knows is Mr. Armstrong is scheduling the morning texts and the morning emails to the appropriate group so that you receive your email reminder to do your daily COVID screening on the days that you're coming and not on the days that you're not coming. It's actually, I think he's coordinating about twelve different messages every single day to ensure the right people are notified. And I know for him, it's a high anxiety responsibility because he doesn't want anyone to receive a notification on the wrong day. So there's a lot that goes in behind the scenes, but we want to make sure everybody knows when they're supposed to be in school, and that's not a point of stress because it shouldn't be. Beginning on March eighth, students who have been identified for additional assistance will begin attending five full days a week at the secondary level. Schools have built a determiner eligibility criteria for individual students based on their own internal procedures and rubrics for determining this. Families may not request for their student to attend five days a week. Eligibility is determined based on this specific criteria. So anticipating, you may want to know what that criteria is, these are our neediest students right now. They have had attendance or engagement concerns, academic performance has not been up to their normal, or does not meet our school standard. They've been involved in the PST process for additional assistance. The PST process is a problem-solving team. So each grade level in the middle school, the classroom level team, eight-one, eight-two, eight-three, and then at the high school level, it's broken down by pod, which is the dean, the counselors, and the social workers. They meet regularly each week to talk about their shared caseload. This is the point where students are having, you know, they're having social, emotional concerns, or they've been working with them and they're not making the progress that they think that they need, they would have been referred to maybe attend school more regularly so that sense of normalcy can be in their day and help them along. As I said, additional supports have been put in place, but with limited success. Students with I E Ps that are making limited progress toward achieving their annual goals are set forth in their I E P can find themselves in this list. English learners with an access score below three, meaning their English language acquisition is at a certain level where their language barrier could be impeding their ability to learn, where language might actually be impacting their grade, not direct knowledge. And we want to be sure that we're assisting that to create an equitable learning environment. And then students currently receiving tier-three support. So these are our students in the R T I process that are on the verge of being considered for a domain for special education, our intensive academic support, as well as some of our intensive behavioral and social, emotional support, will find themselves with an invitation to attend five days a week. This is the right first move to get our neediest students in the building. You know, I don't have it in the presentation, but as we work through this group, if we find that rooms still exist, we'll begin inviting more students to make sure that our secondary schools are filled with as many students that want to be there as possible. But this is the group that we need to start with for sure. So onto some of our smaller groups and the specialties here. The Early Childhood Center communicated this with their families already. The next phase of the E C C will begin in the same time the elementary does. They'll begin, the blended classes will attend four days a week, the normal hours that they are used to, and their self-contained classes will attend five days per week. And then, of course, the remote students will currently live by the schedule they've been living by. Special services, our self-contained students at the elementary level will begin shifting to five full days. They've been currently going for five full days, and they had a shortened schedule at the elementary level. Five full days beginning on March fifteenth. At the secondary level, our light program and our secondary self-contained, actually this week, shifted to five full days where they had been taking Wednesday as a remote day, where the teachers were working with individual students on achieving their goals. But they shifted this week to five full days. And then students with I E Ps, as I had mentioned before, are, can be not recommended for that same criteria to attend five full days a week if they're not making appropriate progress towards achieving their annual goals. Our dual-language program, this is a program that probably does experience the largest amount of change. And I want to prepare you for, and I'm actually the largest amount of change, we do have a handful of students that are going to have experienced a teacher change in our dual-language program. What's different about the dual-language program that we have to keep in mind is we own, we have a very limited number of dual-language teachers. We don't have the extra instructional coaches and R T I facilitators because we're talking about perhaps the greatest shortage of teachers in the country is in our dual-language field. Every year, school districts travel to Puerto Rico and to Spain to recruit teachers because we don't have enough, we're not producing enough in our universities. So we don't have the teachers just to shift around and create more space. We have to get very, Dr. Dulphus Steele and our director, Joanna, are very creative in how they have redone this schedule. So all dual-language students who opted for in-person or hybrid will attend full days, just like our elementary students. They'll receive a combination of core instruction, flexible small group, and specials throughout the day, just like they normally have been. The remote model, K one and two will have fully remote sections, which our dual-language families have been asking for. We have not been able to provide that during this period because of, like I said, we have so few teachers. But they were able to work it out to where they'll have dedicated remote teachers for that model, using a team teaching approach, like a grade-level team of multiple teachers sharing the students and working within that way. In third grade, the teachers actually decided that they wanted to keep their concurrent model for a portion of the day as they're using kind of a team teaching approach. So it's not a fully dedicated remote model for third grade, but a portion of their day will be concurrent, meaning the in-person students and the remote students. The remote students will zoom into the live classroom for a small portion of the day. Obviously, not ideal at the elementary level, however, this group of teachers felt that their structure and their plan was working well and they wanted to keep it because it's what they're experiencing now. And then this model has been designed, like I said, a priority of student instruction has been the focus. None of these changes are easy, but you know, this community I know has been very vocal and communicative with our departments, which we really appreciate. So we want to be sure that they're included tonight. So transportation, I mentioned this a little bit throughout the evening. You know, on February ninth, we asked for help from our community, and hundreds of families stepped up to opt out. Now, many of these families probably had signed up for transportation and weren't utilizing it because they needed that backup, and we realized that. But a good number of these families have said, you know, we're going to drive our students because full day is important to us. And I can't, I can't share my gratitude for that enough. It's been, this transportation challenge we've had to overcome has been a real challenge. And our families have really helped us, we really appreciate of that. Throughout the couple of weeks, we've made further optimizations of our routing. Our buses are going to have, will be almost at full capacity, which is a maximum of fifty students, so they're all going to be probably between that forty and fifty students on a bus. We've also shifted some of our out-of-district routes to different transportation services, like you know, a cab, which is very common, we've just had the drivers to be able to do it, so we have, and bring those drivers back in district. And then, of course, as you approved in the special meeting tonight, the retention bonus for drivers that have left us during this year, or if they come back and those that stay on for the remainder of the year will be eligible for that bonus after hitting a benchmark of so many days worked. And that has worked, and we're really going to be grateful for that. Our secondary families who opted out of transportation received their notice and were asking they begin transporting their students on Monday of next week because that is when that third group of students that will start attending five days per week, beginning on Monday, that'll be kind of a rolling start. So not all of them may begin on Monday, but over the course of the next few weeks, that number will continue to grow as the high school works through that plan. And our elementary families, we made promises to them that they would not, if they opted, I have received a number of emails about this, if they opted out of transportation, they would not be held to that and forced to drive their children until we were back full day. And that's exactly what's happening. We won't start that until the fifteenth for our elementary families. Now, this has also been a question, and I want to be very explicit about this. We do expect longer car rider lines because when hundreds of families have opted to drive their kids, our car rider line is going to be longer. We will adjust our attendance times to ensure that this is as stress-free as possible. And I say stress-free when you're waiting in line and traffic on a school campus. So there's going to be some stress there of just being patient. But some of the concerns that I receive that we don't often think about is a parent who has kids at McCabins and Conley with exactly the same start time, dropping at McCabins, and then they're worried about their child being late to class and will there be ramifications? There will not be any ramifications if we want our kids to come to school safely and you not to be stressed about it, you know, to our parents. So drop at McCabins, come to Conley, we're going to push back our attendance times, is not going to be an issue. If they get to class five minutes late because of that transition, it's a non-issue. I really, directly to our community, I don't want you to stress over that. This is another question that I anticipate. If a family wishes to change from remote to in-person, what options exist for them? Principals have been accommodating families upon request, but I can't stress it enough, it's on a very limited basis. We are bound by our six feet of separation in the classroom, and we only have so many spots. In a certain, you know, there is a grade level in the district where there is, in one of our schools, there was one seat earlier in the week, and I believe it's gone. Some have larger numbers, but it's a very limited basis. And this is, I think, a clarification that needs to be made about, you know, one of the commenters earlier this evening. The people that have been told that we can't provide transportation are the people that are in this group of saying, I now want to switch from remote to hybrid. Our transportation system has been maxed before these requests came in to accommodate our students that are here. So if they want to come back and we can fit them, it'll be, it's a caveat that they have to provide transportation for their students unless, over the course of the next series of weeks, we can figure out and find that space for them, which we're happy to do. We want to be as accommodating as possible, but we just, we need that understanding. We're at the max of what we can do in terms of transportation. So all of our hybrid families that wanted transportation, they have access to it if they need it. With that, I'm happy to take your questions and help deepen our understanding.
Start right to left, if that's okay? Give you the honors. First slot, yeah.
Okay. I will start. Thank you. Dr. O'Farrell, before I ask my questions, I just want to take a minute and acknowledge that you do not formulate these plans yourself. You work with a team of administrators, many in the room here, who advise you and research and talk to other districts and then plan accordingly for what fits best for our district and community. So these decisions take into account many factors that most people don't realize, even though they are not made in a silo. I want to take a moment and thank everyone who has been working tirelessly and having the same sleepless nights that I do worrying about our kids. So I just want to say, I can't wait till this is all in our rearview mirror and we can focus on the great things that our district has. So with that being said, here are my many, many questions, so please hang tight. A lot of them you did answer in your presentation, so thank you for that. So the students with, that are currently getting interventions right now and they're spending the full day, are they still going to, will their interventions expand to where they would have been last year?
Their interventions will occur during the school day, not over Zoom, but in person.
Okay.
And our interventionists that offer intervention services for our students that are remote, that'll continue as well. That's actually a good point that you brought up, that may be another schedule that has to adjust as we now have to accommodate students that are in person. But our students that have been receiving interventions, they'll occur, they'll just occur during the school day in the building.
Okay. I want to make sure that our kids are getting the full amount of hours that they need if they're remote or in person. So I'm hoping that with the full day, we're going to be able to do that.
We will be able to go much further than we've been able to go thus far. That has been a priority of ours that has, you know, if Dr. Dulphus Steele would like to chime in, I would welcome her comments, but I recognize providing services, especially related services during this period, has been a challenge. But it's one that, you know, has been provided, but not all services equate to the same level of need when it's done via Zoom, asking parents for help. It's not the same as when you can, the student can be with you. And again, if Dr. Dulphus Steele has any points to add, I would welcome that assistance in helping answer that question.
Yes, our students will receive, it will be easier when they are in person, so they will receive the services and as Dr. O'Farrell says, easier when we have access, services definitely will, our related personnel will have them here in person. We have a plan for our students that are remote, give them some specific time so the parents can bring our students in a specific time in a slot so they can still have their services in person, something about our remote students.
So if you're a remote student, you're going to have the ability to come in person?
Correct.
Okay.
So if you are a remote student, we are going to offer a specific time during the day. So for example, if you are receiving OT or PT services and you are a remote student, we're going to contact the families. Not all students are the students we're going to go by, the students that have the needs or the students that are really not progressing and achieving their I E P goals. And we're contacting those families, we already have our staff or the names of those students and maybe contact those students soon. And we're going to offer a specific time so they're going to be able to, we just do it in person, and we're going to provide the services in person.
Okay, thank you. I would imagine it's difficult to do P T and OT remotely.
Absolutely.
Kudos to the parents for having to do that. Okay, so we talked about lunch in the classrooms and the students that are staying in the classroom. So if I'm picturing this correctly, students will be in the classroom, the teachers are still going to have their allotted time outside the classroom.
That's correct. The teacher has a duty-free lunch as part of the contract.
Duty-free lunch, they still have that.
Yes.
And the elementary supervisors are going to be in the classroom.
That's correct.
Whose responsibility is it to sanitize the room after lunch? Is it the elementary supervisor or will it be the classroom teacher?
The elementary supervisor is a part of the cleanup process, will trash can pass around, desk wiped as the students head out to reason.
And then there'll be separate elementary supervisors outside or the same one just following?
Same one will head them outside. So the period of students, it's time to line up, six feet outside the classroom, maybe a quick wipe down, you know, and Mr. Van Causic has details about that, but that's all built into the plan.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. And how many, you might not know this offhand, how many elementary supervisors do we hire?
I don't know that offhand, Dr. Zier would have to answer that.
You can get back to me. You can get back to me.
We don't have them all hired at this point. We still have some that we're onboarding, but I can get you a number tomorrow where we're at.
Okay, that's fine. I guess my question is, we we are adequately staffed?
Yes.
To be able to hit off.
We we had elementary supervisors that
Right.
Positions that were already already filled. Um, we expanded the number so that we were adequately staffed to support the needs of the building. So um some of our people, we invited back that that were with us last year.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're we're fully staffed to be able to
We are.
Okay. Um, okay, let me move on to some teacher questions. So, um, do you have a percentage of teachers that are that were vaccinated the first time by chance? How many of our staff have been vaccinated?
Um, our number was was between eighty and eighty-five percent.
Okay. I would assume they'll be, that'll be the same in in the second.
The only reason that someone would not receive their second dose is if uh they happen to be under quarantine during that window. Um, but uh the process for that, as some other districts are are experiencing this, is um is they would be placed on a list in McKinney County Department of Health as they schedule more clinics where one B um eligible uh citizens can can be vaccinated. We can communicate it to them that they can get their second dose there. The twenty-eight days is the earliest you can receive your second dose. Um, that that window can go, currently believed, up to at least three months and still be uh receive your second booster and be fully effective.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know that either. I learned that at the at the clinic, the last clinic, because you're always here, twenty-one days or twenty-eight days. But that's the earliest you can receive it. The second booster will still take effect at the same level as what Susan Karas of McKinney County Health told me.
That's good to know. Um, okay, when uh over spring break, if a staff person or a family goes on vacation, are you going to uh ask that they quarantine when they return?
If our staff or a student and their family travel abroad, uh leave the country over spring break, absolutely. We have a fourteen-day quarantine period for when they return. Um, however, traveling within inside the United States is not. There's no quarantine if you stay within the forty-eight, or stay within the the fifty states.
Right, okay.
Not sure you're going to Alaska over break, but never know.
Hawaii? Okay, and now, the teachers that have to move their classrooms, I know there's not too many of them, but um I I can't even imagine how hard it would be for a teacher to move their classroom with all of their, you know, things in there. How is that gonna work?
That's a building-specific detail that, um, you know, if our principals were here, they could probably give you all the specific details about it. I can follow up with you on that.
The teachers aren't gonna have to move their own?
No, 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 no. We have custodial assistants to move and set the classroom up. Um, where the where the real effort is, it comes into when it when they're they're setting it up how they want it and and how it functions well for them. The desks will be moved, their their bookshelves will be moved, um, you know, but but as teachers are very, they 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 own their space. It's theirs. It's like their home. So it's a, it is a somewhat of an emotional thing to to have to move, and it's not one that that we take lightly. Uh, our principals belabored over this to try and and minimize it to as far, as low as it could possibly go. Um, and it is a relatively short window to to make that move, um, because the students obviously will be there on that Thursday, but
Right, but I were, yeah, when are they gonna do this?
Right.
I don't want them to have to come at night or on a weekend to move their
A lot of that, some of the movement has has begun, in terms of shifting desks that are that are available to set the classroom up. Uh, we have that institute day, there is some training that's taking place that day, but a lot of it really is, get your, you know, get your vaccine and get settled into a new space, if you need a new space, and um catch up on on work and some of the trainings to prepare for what lies ahead for the remainder of the school year.
I just don't want to add any more stress to our teachers than they already have. Um, just a a clarification, uh, five hours of instruction per day is a mandate.
A mandated minimum.
Minimum mandate.
A mandated minimum.
So five hours a day is the minimum mandate
That's correct.
In the state of Illinois, okay. I just wanted to clarify that one. Hang in there, guys, I have just a few more.
No problems here.
Bussing. So, um, thank you for working on that. I know that was a a huge stressor for all of us.
My contributions were small compared to Ms. Lombard.
Well, thank you, Ms. Lombard. I can't even imagine what the hoops you had to jump through for that. So, but thank you. And everyone that needs bussing will get bussing, like you said. We're not denying anybody.
Everyone that needs bussing that has been hybrid since January twenty-fifth will get bussing. If someone is 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 opting to change from remote to hybrid
Yeah.
We can't guarantee that, at least at the start. Maybe in a couple of weeks, we can, we can uh fit them in if they really need it, but it may be some time.
Will the, I think this thing will be longer now because, um?
They shouldn't be. I mean, there are already um anywhere from, you know, thirty to fifty students on a route, and if if they're a little bit closer, that forty to forty-five to fifty students, I doubt they're going to be longer, because really what's happening is the the morning group and the afternoon group are merging. So it's the same number of kids in the in the same neighborhoods. And the bus stops will probably just become, instead of one or two students, it may become six or seven.
Oh, that makes sense, yeah, okay.
I mean, I, you, would you say?
Yeah, that makes sense, okay.
Right, we were like, we just look, they have seven buses in the morning to transport their um AM students, and then there were only five that were needed for the afternoon. So we would have needed twelve buses, but based on those parents who volunteered to opt out, based on some of our staffing, um, we didn't cut that down to sitting in there into seven. We have eleven buses that are still going there, and we wanted to make sure that we were maintaining within kind of our, uh, a few years back, we came up with, you know, we didn't walk students on for a long period of time. Obviously, if it's a route that might be out in the country, it's a little bit longer, but we stayed within those same parameters. Again, like, um, Dr. O'Neal said, it might just be how many kids are getting off at that stop. The other thing we we also did to maintain that is it's not necessarily if your stop's gonna be one block away, it might be two or three blocks away, but not, you know, they're not walking for a mile and a half. But we did shorten, um, we saw that at the beginning, you know, when we did that second uh November as well. So it's it's not a huge change at all, um, to be able to maintain those things.
Okay, okay. My concern is that the kids are on the bus for longer, so you're around somebody longer and so kind of
And transportation, we'll we'll communicate this with the community, but transportation information is still being worked on. It'll be posted uh by next Friday in terms of, you know, where your route location, your bus stop is gonna be.
Okay. Um, and then my last question is for the remote students. You know, you talked about earlier the six through twelve, um, the the students that need the additional support and they've been already identified, um, and invited to come in. Are there kids that are are learning remotely that need those additional supports as well that have been identified? And if so, are what are we doing with that?
Uh, absolutely, they're actually, yes, they are. And, you know, the the three principals of our middle school level have actually have been reaching out to those families.
Okay.
Correct, and and offering those services to coming in five days a week. Because one of the phenomenons that's happening across the high schools that makes this possible in the Chicagoland area is a lot of our high school students are opting to to go remote instead of coming in. We're seeing our number of in-person students slowly decline. Some other schools, um, in in districts closer to the city have seen a rapid decline, um, and they've been able to all open it up. Any student who wants to attend five days a week may come because their their class sizes have not have dropped so dramatically. Uh, a friend of mine who who teaches in in a district closer to the city, uh, was sharing a story with me that on his hybrid days in his science class, he had three students in 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 on on one day and and six students on the next day. And now that anybody can come anytime they want, he still hasn't gone over ten um in any of his classes. And that's just not the case with us. Our students, um, we were fifty-four percent who wanted to be in person at our high school. A lot of those schools started at thirty-five or forty, and it's been declining. Ours has slowly been declining, but um but not to the level where we can just open it up, because if, you know, that would be our move if that's what we could do.
Well, my concern is that there are remote students that are maybe not being identified.
They're struggling?
They're struggling, and and they're somehow
True.
I mean, how do we identify those kids coming from?
You know, I hate to put you in the spot, Dr. Beal, but if you'd like to, uh, since you are here this evening
Sorry.
For our graduation topic in a few minutes, if you'd like to talk a little bit about that, I would welcome
You want to?
He'll be on camera if he comes up here. He's not on camera there.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, good evening. Um, so some of the supports that we have, we are continuously pushing out supports, um, tier-one support to our students. Uh, we have, now that we've shifted to utilizing our Wednesdays, which at the beginning of the day, we're typically, um, we would have our PLT time with our teachers, and then it would be a student support time for about an hour and a half, where teachers were connecting with students one-on-one. We're kind of now shifting back to what we would normally do outside of a pandemic where uh students are arranging times with their teachers on maybe their off-period. We do have a ninety-minute period throughout the day that is assigned to their lunch, uh, that is just kind of a free period for the students. And so during that time, they do have uh the ability to access their teachers, uh, if they happen to be available during that time. So that's another uh way. Now, we're still doing our virtual uh raider way, um, not raider way, raider rating, uh, for students to get that uh those tutoring supports. Uh, we have our student success program that happens after school. Um, we also do have, I know some NHS students that have set up small study groups and have reached out, uh, and there's students that are connecting in a virtual way. Uh, my principal leadership council, there's some students who have talked about how they've been able to connect and access and kind of create this online uh community where they can talk during that time. And then also, too, for students who are in the building, uh, just on their days that they are off, have created those relationships amongst other students, where it's like, hey, you know, we're A group or we're B group, and during the times that they're not in, they still find ways to be able to connect outside because they made those connections in the classroom. So there's many different ways that are happening. Uh, we also do have our our pods, our counselors, social workers, and deans that are reaching out, uh, just trying to actively engage students in figuring out what supports they need, and we're figuring out ways to be able to get them to them.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Dr. Beal.
That's all I had.
That's all?
That's it. A quick one. Thank you.
Any other questions? Maybe just go to the end here, Paul?
You took all my questions.
I'm sorry.
Um, and seriously, though, um, I actually want to give credit to the parents. Um, I I know that this has all been tough, and it's been a lot of adjustments and a lot of ask and a lot of emails and a lot of notifications. Um, but what stood out to me at the very beginning of what you presented was that the kids have cooperated with the masks. And so I want to give credit to the parents who have helped nurture their kids to get used to this. Um, it it's one thing when it, when they're older kids and and they're able to understand a little bit better of the circumstances that are going on, but with the younger kids, it's it's, I would imagine, it's immensely difficult. My kids are not young, you know, that that kindergarten, first grade, early childhood age. Um, so thank you to the parents who have prepared their kids, um, and and allowed them to to come back in this capacity. Uh, it is great to hear, reassuring to hear how cooperative that the kids are in in, I guess, rolling with the punches, for lack of a better term. Um, so I want to say that. And and also, uh, to to all the people that are working and have worked tirelessly in getting this transportation issue completed. Um, I know it it has been a an an arduous journey to to get this entire bussing thing resolved, um, to come from a a pre-pandemic time when no child should have to worry about getting transported, where where people were voluntarily taking their kids in the morning um because they chose to, not because it was necessary for the betterment of the community. And I think it's also important to acknowledge those parents that that have made that adjustment, made that sacrifice, so that other kids can get on those buses and they're willing to to step up and help their kids get to school. And and then I I give them, will give them a lot of credit for having the patience of sitting through the traffic and making sure that their kids get through, especially the kids, like you said, that um have are are split between multiple schools, and the parents are are having to shuffle from school to school to make sure that each one of their kids get to the school on time. Um, question-wise, I am, my time off already?
Hello?
Um, question-wise, uh, I'm curious about what emotional supports are in place and will be in place or extended uh as kids continue to transition from this half-day model to full-day models, um, and five days a week. Um, we have seen, and I think I can speak to everybody, for everybody on the board, but we have seen emails from parents who are concerned about the social-emotional aspects of this entire COVID episode. And so with respect to that, as kids start to return, um, how are we making sure that those kids are being uh provided for or having those social-emotional supports in order to transition and and just, you know, find their own semblance of normalcy, given everything that's transpired over the last twelve months?
Sure. Um, and thank you for that question, because I I think the social-emotional learning, it's not a, it's not a new term to us. It's something we've been discussing for for a little while now. But I can tell you that that term, you know, as I shared yesterday, uh, in in a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce, is going to be front and center for the next several years. Um, what we do now, any of our students that is that is in need of of emotional assistance, we have systems in place and people in place, from the classroom teacher to social workers, to counselors, to the principal, um, to any of us that are willing to help. Um, so if if our families are are experiencing that and seeing this in their children, they just know what, don't know what to do, make that first call to us and let us start putting our heads together with you, um, and figure this out as a team. As our students return, um, I've heard from a lot of families about when the students, the elementary level especially, shift back, and even at the secondary level, they're seeing a change in their kid, a difference in their child, um, and I even see it in my own home. Um, the willingness to, for the for the older group to wake up on time and get ready and go to school, there's not that that morning fight with your teenager that is uh is is so normal. But the elementary level, it's just a, it's an excitement and a buzz about going, and that's the, the routine is beneficial and helps with your social-emotional um mindset, but also just interacting with with others at school for our youngest kids will help with that. Um, with a longer day, our teachers will be able to see our students in in the classroom environment and how they're interacting, because at our youngest level, social-emotional learning is, especially at the K-two building, is when our kids learn how to interact with one another, how to play with one another, how to handle conflict when they have conflict with a friend. That's when that that skill's developed. We start that in the home, that continues on in the elementary level, and they can monitor that, and if a student is is seeming like they're a little bit recluse and off on their own, that that's a a much easier fix for us to put our our proverbial arm around a child and help them um address whatever they're facing or or figure out whatever they're they're upset about, because a lot of it is just being able to verbalize, I'm bothered by this, and they don't know how to express that. So sometimes it comes out in different ways. Um, so we'll have a greater ability, I don't want to sound technical, like, but to diagnose, but to see our kids in the learning environment, um, and the assistance is in place in our school. We have the systems and the people to help. It's just about, um, once we have them back with us, we can uh we can do that much more readily. Um, but this topic is going to be one that will continue for years to come, um, and we'll have the systems in school, but just the the some outreach to our families as we go forward.
Okay. And and I guess to to that point and and what you're saying, um, I think that's probably what we're, not probably, that that's likely, type of feedback that we've been getting from the parents is now they're seeing on a daily basis is their kids are not interacting, whereas now teachers will be back to inner, having those interactions and and being able to observe it, catch it, and 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 work with it going forward. So, um, that makes sense.
And we'll learn from that, too. When we see some some behaviors that emerge from our students that are that are re-entering that are, that are re-entering kind of the, the public setting with other students on a more frequent and longer basis, um, we'll, we'll get some surprises and we'll work through it together. Thanks for the question.
Okay. Thank you. All yours.
Leslie took most of mine. Uh, I only have two, two remaining. Um, uh, when the kids are back, uh, K-3, five, um, lunch, uh, still provided, uh, free of charge?
Yes, it will be.
And still delivery to remote students?
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that because I haven't been able to share that, this publicly yet. Um, but when, you know, I shared a few meetings ago that because of our transportation shortage, we weren't able to continue our remote deliveries. Um, and so we had to, to bring back the, the, the curb side pickup. Um, we were, and I recognized that at that point, that there were families that weren't going to be dis-serviced to the level that, that they needed and the way we wanted to service them. Um, and, and in one of these meetings, I, you know, I asked Mr. Altmaier and Mr. Reed and team to, to find a way, a creative way that we can reignite those, those deliveries to our remote families that are in need. Um, and I'm very pleased to say that, that Mr. Altmaier has, has been able to forge a relationship, uh, with Route 47 Taxi, one of our, our local Huntley partners. And they're going to take over our remote deliveries. Um, it should, it should begin next week. We're still on track for-
Starting Monday.
Start, huh?
Starting Monday.
Starting Monday, the 8th, Route 47 will begin the remote deliveries. Um, so I'm really excited about that because some of our remote families, we know they're in need. Um, and, and we're really happy to be able to provide two meals a day, every single day, free of charge to them. But yes, our students in the buildings will also have that option of, of free, uh, free type A lunch.
Okay. Uh, and then my last question would be, um, I know that on that last slide, you know, the, uh, the remote to in-person or vice versa, but the in-person to remote, um, is that going to be an easier transition if they'd like to do that? I mean, I think all three commenters, you know, are concerned about the return to the classroom full-time. Just kind of curious on your thoughts on the vice versa part.
It's, it's not, it's going to be probably equally as challenging.
Okay.
Um, and the reason being, we have a, a finite number of, of sections per grade level. And there are only so many, I mean, while there's, when you're online, there may be, there may seem to be an infinite number of spaces that a student can take. But the reality is, um, you know, it's not, it's not in our children's best interest nor in our, our teacher's best interest to load them up with 45 kids, um, just because we can. That's, that's not, that's not how we operate. It's not good for kids and it's definitely not good for our staff. So we are, uh, we're committed to doing our very best, um, to sticking to the, to this equal numbers of what our online classrooms are like versus our in-person classrooms in a normal environment. So our, our, our remote classrooms look like our class sizes when we, if we were in person and all students were here, uh, in the low to mid twenties. And in some cases, they have crept up because of the need versus where that tipping point is of adding another section. The problem is, we just don't have another section to add unless, say, 20 third graders, this, at, at one school go remote, then we might have another section. But now the domino is going to be, a lot of teachers are going to, or children have to change teachers in order for, to create another section. So, um, that's why, you know, we, we, uh, it'll be very challenging in order to do. We'll accommodate as far as we can possibly go, but we can't accommodate everyone. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation, Dr. Beal. Um, and to everybody again that was involved. Um, I do have a few questions. Well, it's just mostly on, so thank you.
You're welcome, everyone.
I'm sensing a theme here, don't I?
Usually it's me, so I'm glad it was new this time. Um, but real quick, Dr. Beal, can you just share for the evening, why March 15th? I mean, that's been a question. Um, and I think it's important for the, the community to hear, why you chose that date. I'm not against it, it's just, there's that clarification to the community, why that date.
Well, I think that most importantly, our health metrics are in line. This is the first time that the McKinney County Health Data has been this good since October 2nd. Now, we went hybrid the first time, I think the week of October 19th. So we're, we're talking almost six months ago before, since we were in this, in this place. All four of our areas are meeting. Um, so that, that is very good. Um, we've been in for, when we, when we made this decision, it was something that, that we were prepared to do on January 25th, which is why when we presented at that special meeting on the 11th, we shared step one is half-day AM, half-day PM. Step two is full in-person because we, we, we planned that out with this in mind, not the date, but the ability to do so and knew exactly where all of our elementary classrooms were going to have to shift when we were ready to make that shift. So when, as, as we, as we got into three and four weeks in, it, it confirmed what we knew that, that this was, this was going to be successful. Our mitigation efforts were going to work. Um, and at that point, it became a matter of, um, we have the ability to do it. The, the health metrics are in our favor and are heading in the right direction and are now in the right place. Um, and then the question really becomes our, our staff then became vaccinated, which was not, not a final deciding factor. I mean, had we known in, on October 2nd, what we know now, we probably would have done a few things differently in the fall. And we've learned throughout the process. But the fact that our staff, uh, receiving their second vaccine on the 12th, um, then it becomes a matter of when, how can we maximize all the time we possibly can get with our students? And that was really the deciding factor. Every day with a full day with an elementary student in the building, um, is the, is, is we're be able to give them the best of us and, and help them grow. And I, I anticipate that for the last, um, 12 weeks of the school year, 10 weeks of the school year, we're going to see exponential growth in our students and we're, we're going to be able to really push their learning, which is always our ultimate goal. So, um, it had everything to do with, it is just the right time and, and our system was ready.
Thank you. Um, I have, I have a question to my question here. I'm sorry. Um, do we, with our, with our full day, are we entering into any partnerships with the Park District for, um, you know, in, in normal school year, we have the core care, the aftercare, the Park District coming? Do we have any partnerships for that kind of?
We do. We do. Um, we are, are to, outside of the Park District, we are still not renting our facilities indoors. Um, but because of this shift, the Park District will begin their, their ETC program again. Um, I, you know, Ms. Lombard and Mr. Dean worked with, with Scott Crowe at the Park District and, and Tom Palmer and I spoke several times about this. Um, it'll, it'll operate on, on a slightly consolidated basis. They won't have a site in every single school because obviously they haven't had this up, they've had it up and running at the Park District and not on their, at their satellite location. So we'll have a site at Martin to handle Martin and Cheswick families. Um, we'll have a site at McCabean for the McCabean Conley families. And then Leggie will have a site. Um, so those, uh, Mr. Crowe, I believe was going to, once he was, had confirmation that March 15th was going to be our date, he will open that registration up to families, uh, and allow them to register. And they'll follow all the same, obviously the same, uh, mitigation efforts and safety protocols that we do inside our buildings.
So the families, do you license, will then know how to register for?
The Park District will be sending a communication whenever they are, whenever they're ready, I assume tomorrow or Monday.
Bill, go ahead. I believe that they're going to go ahead and send that so that, um, parents are realizing that now have that. But we also do anticipate that other families, um, now that it is back in the building and being all day, um, may also, um, kind of be licensed as well. So. Okay. Thank you. Uh, I'm going to bounce, all right, real quick to Martin. Students will be eating in the cafeteria at Martin?
Cafeteria and gym at Martin.
At the gym. Will those areas, do they need to be divided into 15, 15, will we, do they need to be divided or?
No, no, no division necessary. Mrs. Happel and, uh, and team in, in conjunction with Mr. Dean, our chief safety and security officer, and, and Mr. Van Cossack have found ways, uh, to creatively make that happen.
Okay.
Now, you have your, remember at Martin, in their gym, they've got the stage in the gym, that's a separate space, the floor in the gym, and the cafeteria. And we typically are not serving more than 150 students anyway. And there are three separate spaces that can fit 50 students in a large. So like I said, Martin is a, is, has a, is an advantage in terms of spacing for, for lunch to occur.
Okay. And then can you walk me through recess then for, because, um, particularly like, you know, inclement weather day. So it was raining, uh, what will happen? Will the kids should stay in those areas in the gym, in the cafeteria? Do we have the right staff to supervise that?
Well, on an inclement weather day, the children will likely stay in a classroom. And it'll be that, that elementary supervisor with them. Um, and the students will have, you know, the, uh, games that they can play on their Chromebook or a book to read. It'll be very different. Um, they won't be able to play some of the, the, the board games like they usually do. Um, you know, it, it's an imperfect, we're in an imperfect situation. Um, but, um, you know, I am glad that you brought, brought recess back up because I, I want to take the opportunity to mention why. Well, that's an imperfect system. I, our teachers, um, and mask breaks, um, was, was another one of the commentators that, and mentioned about mask breaks and the concern of our students wearing a mask for that long. Um, our teachers have ultimate flexibility and the efficacy to make the decision that they need to make for their children. If they see their kids need a mask break, they have the ability to stop what they're doing and go take a mask break at any point that they feel that it's necessary. If it's one every hour and they can work it into their plan and they think that's what their kids need, we, they've been encouraged to do so. And I, when I, as I drive to the schools, I see, uh, Ms. Cravens out, and that, when the literacy teacher high, and I see her and her kids out, uh, regularly for a mask break, um, and that there. So it's happening at our upper levels as the weather gets warmer. I mean, I'm envisioning laps around the building just to get a movement break and a mask break and space the kids out that way. Um, I, I don't anticipate that to be a concern because they have the flexibility to do whatever they need to do for their students. There's, there's, you know, there's no heavy hand and kids must be in the seats, sitting in rows. If a teacher you feel they need one, please take one.
Well, can they need to wear their mask outside during recess? Or will, will there be restrictions of playground equipment, things like that? Are there any?
If they're on the playground equipment, they must wear their mask. They'll hand sanitize when they leave the building. They'll hand sanitize as they come back into the building. Um, and then the elementary supervisors will keep an eye on if they're not on the playground equipment, is, you know, if they don't have their mask on, are they keeping appropriate spacing? Are they, you know, playing, you know, hugging one another or playing too close? And then we'll just, it's, it's an educational moment for them at that point. Uh, like I said, this is an imperfect situation. Um, we don't expect our kids to not have their mask fall down below their nose when they're talking to a friend or be on the playground and run up to a friend they haven't seen in a few months and talk to them without their mask on. Um, but it's, it's a situation that, that can be handled with, with delicacy and grace and the kids can learn from it. But, um, but when they're on the equipment, they will be required to wear their masks. And that'll be specifically and explicitly communicated to our families so they understand and they talk to their kids.
Thank you.
And it'll be taught in the classroom. We'll, we'll go through the steps of how to go on the playground since you haven't done this, this year while doing everything safely. Our teachers will take those steps.
Excellent. Uh, somebody else wants about testing for cases of staff. Are we making any headway with getting involved in that for our district, um, to have that, those rapid tests?
We are actually. The, um, the, the county health department has made it, uh, has made it available, well, the state of Illinois has made the, the tests available for any student or staff member who is exhibiting symptoms. So that way, if they, if they exhibit symptoms, they can go get a test and a, a rapid test. And if it comes back positive and they start their quarantine, if it comes back and we get them out of the school quickly. If it comes back negative, um, then that, the, the nurse that, that administers the test has a decision to make. Um, are the symptoms that you're exhibiting, are they COVID-like or are they allergy-like? And do you need to go and, and get a PCR, which is a more invasive test? Or can we send you back to the building and say, this negative test is enough? Go back to the building and continue your day. Um, we have, we have run into a challenge getting a doctor to write the script for that. What you, what is required is you need a standing order, uh, from a doctor. And the health department has not been willing to issue that. Uh, Northwestern Medicine and Huntley, uh, their, their, uh, liability won't allow them to issue it because they have, um, liability, um, written into their liability claims that they have to follow up. So if they issue the order, we administer the test, and then they don't follow up, they're not following through on their end, which is why, has caused inhesitancy. Um, we have been in regular contact with the other superintendents in the county and the area to figure out how, if some are getting it, um, where that standing order is coming from. And we just, we have not found that, that luck with a doctor willing to write that order. It should come from the health department, but for some reason, they're not willing to do it. But they are running it. It begins, uh, on Monday of this next week. Uh, and we'll have the ability to schedule, uh, schedule a family. If, if a student or staff member comes to the nurse's office with symptoms, uh, right then and there, we can help them schedule for a 15-minute time slot, same day, they can go to Woodstock, um, and, and get their test and 20 minutes later get their results and either know they're going to quarantine or return to the building, uh, and continue their day. So that's made good progress very, very recently.
Okay. Good to hear.
We've been working on it for, for months, but it's, it's, it's been one of those, um, one of those issues that's invaded us.
Dr. Beal, can I have, um, we, we applied for that Cleo waiver over winter break, um, because if we were to do it in the district, we had a pretty good plan and applied for that Cleo waiver. We do have that. We're registered for two years so that, um, if and when we do get that doctor's standing order, we would be prepared to go and wouldn't have to wait until, um, two weeks or a few months to get that, to hold out that. And Donna Coons, um, our nursing lead was on a call today with IDPH and did express, um, as well as some other districts, that concern with trying to get that doctor's order to see if there was something that the state could look at for, uh, districts who are having difficulty with that. So they did have an answer today, but, um, that is being discussed at that level as well. And so we're prepared, ready to go if and when we get that. And we would get the, um, testing material from the health department. They do have those and will provide those for us here in the district.
Check here, you know, you might get someone in the community.
Here's Cross.
So you never know. Uh, so, okay, yeah, so there comes that question. Uh, going back to, uh, we talked about taxis delivering the meals, we partner. Um, do we know who those drivers are? What, do they have to go through any kind of background check? I mean, we're giving addresses. So will they be specific drivers that we know who they are that are coming to our, um, to deliver to the homes? And do we know or?
Well, there won't be, there's no interaction. So they know an address, they make a drop.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Altmaier, if you have additional details, you're welcome to, to chime in on if it's the same, they have one, this, a consistent driver and what information do they have about the families that they're delivering to? But I, my understanding is they aren't going to need or have specific information. They have an address. They drop a, a standard breakfast and lunch at the door, maybe the number at that particular door and then move on.
Okay.
That is correct. We kept all, we kept all students' names off of any list going to, uh, to Route 47. It is just a, an address with a number of meals.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you.
And notification is going out this week to those families.
Thank you. Uh, two questions, one of them. With regards to busing, and you may have answered the questions, I apologize, for students that are opting in now, is there a chance that they have, uh, some busing could open up for them or are we, are we pretty much solid with their, this is going?
Yes, there is a chance.
There is a chance. Okay.
It's not going to happen immediately. But as we, um, as we start, because the routes are still being built. So, because we had to change so much. So it really comes down to our, our transportation's ability to, to build around and add students. When they're built and we know how many students are on each bus, um, they can look at those requests and then potentially add a student here, a student there. My intention in saying that is I, I want to create an expectation that it won't happen.
Right.
And if it can, then I, I don't want people to be disappointed. Uh, uh, we can only do is, is what we can do with the limitations we have with transportation right now. It's, you know, it's, it's another aspect of the crisis that we're trying to, to navigate through.
Fair enough. Sure. Uh, I understand my-
But I am hopeful that, that anyone who wants it will be able to have it. I mean, that's, that's kind of, that's been who we are. We've had a hazard designation. You don't have to walk the mile and a half that, that you're supposed to because of where our schools are. Every student has access to transportation. That would be our preferred, um, situation. But I get it. This, this, this crisis continue to throw, continues to throw curveballs at us.
Yes, it does. It does. Um, and my last question, um, I think might be more for Dr. Beal. Um, we hear numbers in the classrooms are, um, declining. We've got, how many classes do we have that are maxed out? The, the, see back on Paul, there's only two and three students, you know, in session A and session B. Could we be heading towards an opportunity where, uh, high schools could open up more days for them?
Uh, so we have, we monitor our numbers of all of our sections individually. Uh, we've run over 500 sections of classes a day, uh, just within our block period. Um, and in, even in looking at the numbers, uh, we do have the ability in some classes, but may find a barrier somewhere down the road. Typically when we're bringing a student in, we have to look individually at each of their classes to make sure that there's a seat available for them in each of those classes. Once we hit one out of the seven classes that they have, we have to stop right there and, and make sure that one, we're maintaining that distancing. We have added a few more desks into 19 classrooms in order to allow the 148 students we have coming back on Monday to five days, uh, where you've added additional seats. But we're looking at those numbers. Um, every day, we have students who are transitioning from hybrid to remote for various reasons. Um, and so we're just, we want more. Our kids want to engage more with other students in their classroom. And yeah, they don't like having two and three, but it's, it's kind of beyond our control. We know that we have the seats available and we'll look at, uh, the requests as they come in, uh, and if we're able to make that switch, we make it.
But you'd say we're, you're pushing the boundaries as far as you can responsibly do so?
Yes.
It's kind of a burden to hear, you know, so many people wanting to get back in and then they said, there's, there's students that are in and the students are like, I'm the only one, or there's two of us. And it then starts to defeat that purpose of, you know, that socialization and being around your peers. And it almost feels a little bit awkward. So how do we push that? But we're already doing that. So kind of answers some questions. But thank you.
The high school schedule is a monster in and of itself.
Yeah, it would be. But Dr. Beal, can you stay there for a second? I mean?
Yeah, because I'm down. So.
Yeah, I just, but I'm not comfortable. I was going to view you. But the, the question, do you have any, what's the main reason why that, that's occurring? I mean, do you have a, I mean, I know there's a number of reasons. What's the biggest reason that that's occurring? I mean, yeah.
I would say, I would say some of the bigger, uh, reasons that people do so is, um, the reality to a high school, right, is it's a little easier for them, uh, to be able to- It's a little easier for them, uh, to be able to work at home, right? Doing, we see the kids and I would just call it, we see kids who transition home, uh, during test days and want to be able to work at home because they have, uh, materials there to be able to support them.
Right.
Additionally, uh, when they see that Huntley High School is not the 3,000, uh, student hustle and bustle where there's just tons of things going on and engaging and they see this environment that, uh, is a little bit more polarizing. Um, they don't want that. It's either I want back to socialization back in high school and that real feel of what it's like or I don't want it at all. Um, and we, we gotta get there, right? We gotta take steps to be able to get there. Um, additionally, uh, for, um, students who, who have just open periods, right? We have early, uh, early release, um, on our second block day. We have late arrival for our students on our first block day, uh, plus the additional, uh, lunch period that they will be assigned to that's currently not filled by a class or anything. So if they look at that and they're like, hey, on the first day, I'm only going to school for two of my four periods. What's the purpose of me going in? I'm going to just stay home, right? So it's, some of it is just, is the scheduling, uh, piece as well.
Okay. Um, while you're still up there, um, I mean Wednesday, I did, was there any different, uh, or was it kind of the same? I know it's a different type of day, but, uh, having gone through your first Wednesday, was it any?
Wednesday, one of the things that we're seeing, uh, is that that 90-minute block period is a very long time to sit. Uh, especially one being confined to a space, but then, um, you're doing four 90-minute periods. Uh, we've seen some, uh, and heard some great feedback, uh, from even students about just the rotation of, of the eight periods, right? It got on moving a little bit more, periods were 38 minutes. So, um, a lot more transition. What that, um, what that does for us on the other side though, is there's more transitions within the building to different classrooms.
Right.
Right? Uh, and I think that's why we haven't transitioned our full schedule to that, just one for the consistency, but two, uh, to try to limit, uh, the movement, uh, as much as possible in the building.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to ask. It was awful. I didn't want to have to keep dragging them up and down.
Perfect.
Yeah, maybe we should just. You picked a good day to come, come to the meeting. Final.
Is there any other questions from anyone?
Yeah.
Yes.
So not related to, well, part of this, but how are, sorry, how are sports going? Uh, with some of those kids coming back and their after-school activities?
Uh, sports are going great. We actually just started our last round of practices about 30, 40 minutes ago.
Yeah.
Uh, but the process of students coming in, we have students coming in multiple doors, different teams to avoid a lot of the crossover. Um, they have a, they streamline the process where students are scanning QR codes to fill out their check-in. So it's not having to write down all of the information when they come in, answer their questions, uh, getting their temperature taken and then heading off to their, uh, location. Um, we posted games, uh, and competitions. We've gone to other schools and hosted games and competitions, or not hosted, but have attended games and competitions. And, uh, we have seen great success. Our athletic department, um, our, we have assistant ADs who are just working around the clock, hours and hours. Um, we've had some challenges with our live stream technology. They say if you're not using technology and you don't, you know, not experiencing those problems. Um, that's a system that we're currently working on, uh, knowing that we're getting ready to start a lot of our outdoor sports. Um, we are ordering tech or have ordered technologies to be in shortly, uh, for us to be able to, uh, live stream a lot of our sports, uh, that are outdoors. Right now we have the luxury of our cameras that are indoors. Um, our football field has it, but soccer and things of that nature don't have it. So we are, uh, looking to be able to provide that experience for people who won't be able to attend. Still awaiting just, uh, what it will look like for spectators for our outdoor sports. We have not received guidance on that yet.
Thank you for that.
All right.
One more.
One more.
We're going to go to Dr. Rose. Are there any updates on, uh, state testing? And if there are, if, if there are, I don't know that at this point, but if you do have a, can you clarify for the community once again, what that timeframe really looks like? Um, what, what that really takes away from teaching?
Um, the updates on state testing, uh, is, is come down from, uh, from, from the Biden administration, um, that we, in the Department of Ed, that we will be giving a standardized assessment. They were not, not going to approve any, any blanket waivers for states to, um, to not give the assessment. So what we know now is we are going to have to give some form of assessment. Uh, the state of Illinois has, um, has pledged that they will apply for the maximum waivers of waiving the current requirement that 95% of students take that assessment. Um, that has, that has yet to be applied for or approved. Uh, the, the actually, um, Secretary Cardona was, was approved today. So we now have a Department of Educational Secretary. We haven't had one up to this point. Um, but, uh, the 95% of students taking the test is one of the waivers that they will seek. They'll also seek some flexibility in terms of the number of, of assessments that they give. If they are able to reduce that, um, it will help in terms of the number of days that we have, we have to meet. Um, you know, there, there has been some talk, it is speculation at this point, but there has been some talk of, um, our local assessments that are, are nationally normed, which would be our star assessments that we use, um, may be able, it may be an option instead of giving another assessment. We've already taken those, but giving another assessment, um, that's yet to be determined. Um, I do know that, that whatever assessment is given, it will be able to be taken remotely. So we won't have to try and coordinate our remote families coming in, uh, and, and bother them with that since they've, they've elected to remain remote. So that's, that's a big positive. Um, we may have some flexibility to push it back later in the spring. Um, so there's a lot of unknowns still. Uh, the, the known that we absolutely have is we will be taking some standardized assessment. Um, but we don't know yet what the state of Illinois will be able to waive. Doctor Schlitzer, anything to add to that?
Yeah, I was just, uh, checking in actually on a couple pieces of information. We've been planning forward, um, actually in team, we just had another meeting today. We had a long one yesterday. Um, so we're, we're really hoping that that confirmation on the remote assessment comes through because the students that are in-person students, um, it will still be days of testing. Uh, but if we did have to transport our remote students, it would obviously be a, a large task, not just for the transportation, but for the state, the practice. We are, are really looking at currently the, the window for, uh, for example, our IAR testing, which is grade three through eight, it ends on May 15th. It's the state extends that as Dr. Rose said, they pledge to do. Um, we will look at pushing back our, our testing days as, as far as we can this year. Um, not jumping the gun and giving them real early. We want to make sure that our students get that time to come in school and really get settled in. Um, and we'll look at minimizing the number of days of disruptive learning. Um, and so we would, we would, hopefully we will get a, a daily window for that. Um, we're just working with our building administrators to try to really, again, minimize the scheduling. It's a little bit of a catch-22 because there are, right now, if it's not shortened, there's actually five sections plus a field test, so six sections for our third through eighth graders, which we can't give more than two per day. So we would just have to do a devise or say, okay, that's, you know, three to four days of testing. So we want to make sure that we really make it as, as streamlined and positive students as possible, as well as a good testing environment. Um, but you know, as Dr. Rose has said, I think we all feel the same, which is we want accountability. We want the assessment results. We have our star assessment, which we are very confident in we're using that data. Um, it, it's just the disruptive learning that we're going to try to reduce as much as possible. The middle school poses challenges as well because, um, we do need to still have that same number of days of testing for our in-person students, but it would have to be spread over the days for actually in-person, which would be a little bit longer into the next week. So we're looking at some of those details. Um, the high school, uh, would be looking at SAT for grade nine, excuse me, PFAT for grade nine, PFAT for grade 10, SAT for grade 11, and then of course the science assessment for fifth, eighth and 11th. And so it's a heavy testing load for the state assessment. We are really, um, hoping and counting on the state to go ahead and take maximum advantage of those waivers as they said that they have the work as quickly as they can and sure. And the sooner we can hear back from them, the better. But in the meantime, we really are planning forward for the largest case scenario because we have to. Um, we have to be ready. So our hope is that we can, that we can deal that back as the state lets us know that those waivers are coming through.
And as Dr. Schlitzer said, it's not about not care, not wanting the accountability. To be clear about that, that's, that's not, that's not our issue at all. It's, it's a hundred percent about taking days of in-classroom learning away.
Right.
We're not going to get this data until August. So it's not even, it's not actionable right now. There, there's not, you know, we'll, we'll learn a snapshot of what the students who, who took the test, um, where they are in comparison to students around the country. But, um, and not, in, in this environment, it, it doesn't give us a whole lot that's going to be really meaningful for, um, for helping our students right now.
Thank you.
Anything else?
You get to go. I have a few things, but you get to go. It's your committee still.
Oh, no, go ahead.
No, I'm, it's your committee.
I know. You have questions.
You have what?
So you have questions.
I don't have, I have some questions quickly. Um, just rehash, transportation, nothing in your opinion is radically changing, right? I mean, we're just, we're working off the same metrics, just trying to fit it in a little bit better. I, I'm just talking about like the numbers of kids on buses and stuff like that. We're, we're not, we're not radically changing.
No, no, I don't, there's no radical change. I mean, some, some of the routes we've had to, like, like Ms. Lombard said, like he, normally on a full day would be 12 buses. We've condensed that down to, to 11 based on the families that have opted out. So our students can expect, our families can expect to experience maybe a bus number change.
Right.
Um, their bus stop may be slightly further away, um, in order to accommodate as, as short of a route as possible.
The morning, it was going in the morning and leaving at a certain time. I mean, so that part, you can, you can give it. But I'm just talking about like numbers on the buses that.
No, all of them are going to be below 50. That's the maximum that we are allowed to go.
Right. And then you, you do have built in, I just wanted to make the point of, I, I mean, I, I know it's a bit, you know, tenuous on, we're trying to, you know, gain access to bus drivers and we've taken the actions we've done. But you do have built in that you do have some backup subs. Um, it's not like, okay, we have one driver go down and we're toast.
Oh, that's correct.
We, we do have some backup, but it's involved in that.
We do. We have, we have a, uh, uh, an adequate number of subs that are, that are our backups, yes. It, it's, 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 we don't, we can't have, you know, we can't handle 15 drivers all of a sudden being sick one day. We're going to be a real struggle. But, um, you know, based on the average number of drivers who are sick each day, we have adequate subs to cover all of them and, and a couple of states.
A little bit of cushion, right?
Yeah. Are any of those subs in the room right now?
Some of them want to be, you know, right? And we are, like today, we, we, um, had a great interview. We, we will continue to move forward and, and probably for the time being utilize any hired staff, you know, substitutes who can do that or be able to accommodate, um, you know, and you just know we, uh, will be future. Because, oh, we know that this, um, fixes the transportation just for this phase. We do know, um, we still aren't where we are at full capacity.
Correct.
Cause if, if we all get what we want and come August, this 50 person on the bus restriction is lifted, and that, that's some relief, but we are still dealing with a national bus driver shortage. So we, you know, we still need bus drivers and we're going to continue to recruit aggressively, uh, in order to make that happen.
Right. And this will go to my bigger point of just you and your administrative team over, over this whole timeframe. The, you know, obviously the constraints that you're constantly had to work within has just required an enormous amount of planning, um, in, involved in it. None of this is haphazard. It's, yeah, some of it's learned as you go. Obviously you have to be under the circumstances. But, um, what I'm, I'm taking out of listening to this and previous presentations is the amount of thorough thought process that's being given. Um, the fact that you had a, a plan to be back, such that you didn't, like you said, you didn't know it'd be possibly March 15th, but you had a plan back, I mean, going back to December, January as to how it would look shifting over from, from half-days to, to full-days. Um, and again, so none of this is, you know, I, I just want to commend all the time and effort you've all taken to put together a very thoughtful plan. I mean, you just, you've gone over all these different issues you've, you've had to consider, even on the smallest of things, whether it's food service, transportation, maintenance issues. Um, it, it, it doesn't end. It's, 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 it's all sorts of things that you guys have to deal with and think through and come up with. There isn't a quick, easy fix. You flip the switch and then one day you say, yeah, we're all back. That's not what happens in this circumstance. It, it requires tremendous amount of thought and effort and forethought as to how this will all work, um, together. And, and you guys have been consistently at the top of your game throughout this whole process. And you're to be commended for all of that. And I appreciate the time and effort that, that's been put into every one of this. I mean, and then lastly, uh, just readdress the, uh, I think Melissa brought it up just to, you know, she said, why March 15th? And you've heard a few commentators talk about why are you rushing, why are you rushing? And, and, and again, and you, you can address it again, but in my view, I mean, this is, you know, this has all been, like you said, it was planned when, when the opportunity would exist, we would, uh, we would make our move to go back. And, uh, it, it, it's the best timeframe. If you wait, if you wait past spring break, you, you got too many excuses for a while. Now you're going to have to wait two more weeks for everybody who was on spring break. I mean, you, you just keep coming up with excuse after excuse. And at some point you have to make a, a strong calculated move in the metrics that warrant that that's the appropriate time to, to be going back. So I think that's, uh, in, you know, in support of that date, I, I just agree. It's, you know, it, whatever days you can get kids back for that level of time is extremely important under the circumstances we've been under. So, um, I, I, I absolutely concur with that being the right timeframe. And then last, lastly, I'll allow you to address other districts, um, and where they're at. Um, you know, we constantly hear the fictitious, just all these districts that are in and they're all full-time and, you know, it's, it doesn't, it's nowhere near the case. Um, we're probably, you know, as best I can tell, I know you shared with us some, some local McHenry County districts and where they're at, and I can see that we're, we're moving a little bit quicker than some of them are. Uh, but I mean, how would you gauge where we're at between McHenry County, Kane County, um, and other districts in the surrounding area as far as?
Um, well, I, I would say, you know, not all of those, not all of those districts have shared their dates publicly. So I certainly don't want to be the one who let the cat out of the bag, but, uh, um, but I can tell you they're all, they are all planning.
They aren't going anytime soon.
They are all planning for, for more students in-person based on our conversations. Um, or, or, you know, they haven't shared a date publicly, they haven't shared it internally. They're, that's, that's where they're all, they're all working towards. Um, while we may be the first who's been, is remote and hybrid as long as we have in our immediate area, um, you're right about the point that we've heard of, of so many districts that have been, been all back. And what, and as I've dug into that, what I've been finding is it's the high school districts and the high schools in the district that have not had, um, a robust attendance like we have, that have been able to open and say, come on back. Um, and that's, that's how it's been happening, um, based on what I've seen. So in, in terms of comparing to other districts around, um, you know, the, the only thing I do know is, 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 uh, Fox River Grove did share with their community today that they'll be coming back immediately following spring break. Um, full day with our students. Um, and as for Kane County, the schools in Kane County have been, and most of, some of them have been in, uh, for most of the school year in some form of hybrid. Um, you know, I believe at this point they, they have been, some have been having conversations, should that expand? Should that, should that stay? So I think the conversations are happening because the metrics that I shared are pretty similar around. You know, District 300, as one of our commentators mentioned, is looking at how they can expand to full day as well. So, and that's been public. So I think the conversations are happening, but to our, to our advantage, I guess, as to why we're in this position where we can do it now. To your point, Mr. Cryliano, when we, when we asked our families in December to take that survey of, of would you choose in-person or remote, um, that, that was a monumental shift in what we were doing. And we changed and turned our hybrid system and our, our learning program on its head. And it was a, it was a, that, that shift was, was felt to every single family, especially at the elementary level, with changing teachers, um, with, uh, just what the remote schedule that had been hemming and hawing with our hybrid schedule and how they were linked. We made that separation. Um, that was a, it was, it was hard for our families, um, to experience. But what it did was it almost set us free in terms of giving us a clear path forward.
Gave you a pathway, yeah.
So, and, and like, and like we said, that we shared that path when we went public with, with our plan was on the 11th, which has allowed us to, um, to take this big step now because, because it was properly planned for a long time ago. Okay.
I'm done with mine.
That's it?
That's it.
Well, I got my list of 20 more questions. I do, I've asked a plan for the Mr. Gentry question. I do, I've asked a plan for the Mr. Gentry questions that usually come from a place that I'm not prepared for. So I hope.
I actually just wrap it up and say, you know, just thanks for the continued hard work and looking forward to exciting times taking the next step forward. And I'm sure, like you said, they'll learn a ton each week that goes by. And, you know, hopefully kind of keep getting closer and closer to the era quoted normal.
Right. It is an exciting time. We are very excited for this next step. Thank you.
Bring the, to item 4.2, the mouthful contract with Ombudsman Educational Services for alternative school. Dr. Flitzer.
Yeah, this is actually something that we have done several times. The most recent time was at this point last year. So Ombudsman Educational Services is the service with which we contract to run our alternative school. It's running as an alternative school through our state system, but it is part of Huntley High School. And Ombudsman is the agent that runs it for us. And so this is just a contract. It's an all-in contract with them for one year. And I do want to point out that, working with Dr. Beal and Mrs. Letkowitz at the high school, even back to the beginning of this entire program, that we do aspire to bring that program in-house. We are recommending a one-year extension of our Ombudsman contract because we want to make sure that we have the capacity to do it well. They're doing a nice job serving our students. Of course, we always think we can do it better, but there's also a lot of complexities to that, especially in a very complex year. So we believe the most prudent course of action would be to extend the contract. The dollars are in the budget as they have been for the past few years. And we would like to go ahead and extend that and then use the course of this coming year to work on just really reevaluating that entire program to make sure that we are serving the students the best way possible and make any improvements that are needed at that point.
Okay. Now, how many, how many students are in the program currently?
I believe we've got about 34 right now. Yeah, so good. We're both on the same page. Yeah, 34 students right now.
Okay.
And they're served in an off-site location. They go for four-hour blocks. So there's a morning and an afternoon session.
Okay. Any questions or issues bringing that one to the board for approval? All right, we'll carry that forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next item up is item 4.3, graduation update. Dr. Rowe.
All right. Thank you very much. I have invited Dr. Beal here to share some visuals and a plan of what we're anticipating and plans for graduation. He has seemed to, might have been an exceptional job of making graduations special for our brothers last year. I mean, very personalized with home visits. But I know that the plan he's going to share with you with Beal is much different and is much smaller than normal. So I'll queue up his presentation in line to walk through it.
So while Dr. Rowe is pulling up the presentation, one of the things that I will share is that, yes, last year was definitely an experience for a week being on a bus traveling through every single neighborhood. It was awesome to see. It was actually very eye-opening. But it was just a great experience for kids. People still talk about it to this day, but just huge shout out to my team who rode the bus with me. I'm crazy. They were like, yeah, you are. But it was, like I said, it was tons of fun. This year, we are shifting to more of a traditional ceremony. To give you just a little bit of background, typically we hold our graduations at Northern Illinois University. They aren't even holding their own. And so we learned very early on, back in November, that this was going to be the case possibly. So we have canceled our contract with them for this year, seeking to hopefully go back to them once we are out of the pandemic. But knowing that, we started to do some research and some investigation on actually hosting our own graduation on our own facilities. The reason we will be hosting it, as you can see, on May 22nd, which is the date of graduation, the current date of graduation. We have a rain date of the 23rd, which is Sunday. It's the following Sunday. Reason being is that all of the equipment that we would be utilizing and that would be set up for Friday, the companies that are bringing the stage and so forth, just to keep it set up and just utilize the rain date and shift into Sunday and keeping everything that I'm going to explain the same and we literally would just make the call and shift if we needed to. But we're going to have awesome weather. Doug told me we've got projections for the next five years, so we're good. We will have three ceremonies to take place on the football field, 10 o'clock, a 1 o'clock, and a 4 o'clock. What this will allow is for us to be able to transition between ceremonies. We are maxing out our graduate count at between 2:40 and 2:50, which will give us more than enough in each of our ceremonies to cover. And each graduate will be allowed for guests, okay? Right now, just so you know, we don't have any guidance or information regarding outdoor events and things of that nature. And if we do receive those, we will adjust our plans accordingly. But we're planning as if things, with the trajectory that we're on, be open a little bit more and allow for us to do these events. If the state comes out with some of those guidelines specific to graduation, we'll make sure that we adjust it and bring it forward as well. Knowing typically, we allow for seven people to participate as guests in graduation when we are at the civic center or the convocation center at Northern Illinois. We are able to get four, and even still, we will stream, live stream our ceremonies, all three ceremonies on YouTube. It will be, we will treat them as separate events, so there will be a link to each of those events, but we'll make sure that those are streamed for people to be able to view from the comforts of their own home should they choose. To give you a little bit of visual, I've included some pictures here. We are going to be bringing in a stage and the next few slides will have some of what those pictures will look like. We will have our 250 graduates on the field. The opportunity also too, to bring our graduates back to school, right? Many of them have spent their senior year not being back in the building for any reason, right? If they're not participating in any sports clubs or activities, this is allowing them to end their last moments, right, at Huntley High School, together on a field and so forth. Our graduates will be there. Our groups of guests of four will be socially distanced. So if you look at this picture here that I have of the chairs, we're going to group students by their family, by their families. So we'll have four chairs that are close together, socially distanced from the next group of chairs, both front to back, all the way around. We'll stagger the rows so that they're not directly behind each other, just to allow and maximize as much as we possibly can for distancing. We will also be utilizing our bleachers. Currently, we have been kind of operating in this 50-person space. While our bleachers can hold a lot, we will socially distance our families and guests in the bleachers as well. We will utilize general seating first and then move to the bleachers for the ceremony. The one thing I will say too, that this is an important piece, people will ask, the 250 graduates, it's just a number right now. We will send out a link for families to be able to opt which ceremony they would like to attend. Reason is, many of our students, and in hearing from some of our students, like I said, I have a principal's leadership council, I have seniors on that team, I've talked with students within the building, and they just want to be with their friends, right? Many of them have started in the district together and traveled all the way through. We have done everything by alphabet, right? Last names, like is your ID number, is your last name? Graduation can be a little bit different. Some of them will want to just see their friends that they've been in the district with and ending their time together to be able to graduate together. So while it will not be alphabetical from A to Z across, from the first ceremony all the way to the last, we will alphabetically arrange them in their individual ceremonies that they sign up for, right? So if they're watching a live stream, like, hey, my kid's last name is Zier, they will know, like, they're still going to be at the end. I'm sorry. So that was a key point. So looking at some of the pictures here, the stage that we will have, this stage in this picture was taken at University of Illinois down in Champaign. So it kind of gives you a little bit of perspective. They're in a stadium, like a full bowl stadium. But they were able to do a full concert out on their turf and in their stadium for their school, prior to the pandemic, of course. But this is a stage that we would be using. It's a semi-trailer that kind of unfolds into a stage. We will also, to the right of the stage, if you are looking at these pictures, there's little strips of screen hanging down. They actually are one video wall. And we will have a large Jumbotron video wall that will be next to the stage for people who are further back in the field to be able to see. Nathan Knappke has turned our Performing Arts Center into a virtual recording studio. So we have the technology to be able to take outside, onto the field, to be able to not just have that one shot, but we'll be able to do close-ups of graduates walking across or people who are viewing. We will be able to, people will be able to see everything that's going on, no matter where you are on the field. We have received some renderings from MMS Productions, who is the, who has submitted the statement of work, which is in your packet, where you are able to see some of the renderings. These are not to scale, but they actually do a study of our field to determine the amount of sound that's needed, to determine vantage points of, if you're sitting in the bleachers, will you be able to see and kind of where we need to position our stage? So we will make this the best atmosphere possible for those that are here. And then the next slide just has a couple more pictures. Lastly, this information will be posted after this, the contract and so forth, the statement of work is approved at the March 18 board meeting. And the graduation website and all of those details will go live in regard to what graduation or what Captain Gown pickup will look like, just information about tickets and things that people would want to know. We are going to house it on our graduation website and make sure we push it out. So any updates that we have, let's say the state does send guidance after we release all of this and we need to make some changes, all of our changes will be posted on the website, which can be, we'll navigate through the Huntley High School website and be on our main page. We'll also too be sending updates to senior families as well of what we are going to do. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I had an anticipated question and jumped in. We've also been attacked and investigated how to properly protect our field turf to ensure that it's usable after graduation.
Right.
It's a very important ceremony, but it's also used for soccer, lacrosse, football regularly. It will be.
You really did take my question.
Oh, good. But we have invested, there are covers, poly covers that can be, we were having a conversation with a, with a virtual company today and they're waving on a quote for something like that. So we are taking necessary precautions to ensure that the semi is not driving directly on our turf. We would be looking at the purchasing, but it's probably a one-time thing. There's a reasonably priced rental. The only other thing I would add is if you screen your next item, I have a point for the next item. I'll have to call. But we're taking this cross to protect the field.
I'm looking at it.
Actually, there was a Mr. Troy's question, Mr. Gentry.
I have a question, Dr. Beaman. Although I'm kind of sad you're not going to come to the house. Is that such a cool, my daughter benefited from your guest appearance. You're right, they still do talk about it. But it's exhausting, so I agree with that. So I know we're going to talk about this on the next item here, but is this more expensive or less expensive than if we had it as a consultation than ours?
This could be more expensive.
It will be.
How much?
So typically, sorry, you want to.
No, go for next one.
So typically, we budget about $12,000 to host our event at Northern. Right now, in your package, you see that this comes out to about $15,000. And that's minus the rain date. The rain date will add an additional $4,000. If we do not use the rain date, we don't pay the $4,000. I mean, there's some ancillary items like rent, chair rentals, which is about $1,300, which we've already secured because everybody's thinking outdoor graduation, so chairs are going to be of need. So we've already kind of started the ball on some of those items. But it's really, when we go to Northern, we go to Northern, we get everything. Chairs, stage, sound, all of it, and a team to manage. We are doing this all à la carte by ourselves, our internal team, things of that nature. So we're going to need volunteers to help with setup. Just putting it out there. You want to fill out the stairs.
By me, by me. Okay, and then.
But they offer it fully within the high school.
Okay. Well, I think it's worth it to be able to give these students some, someone of normality, you know. Although we don't usually graduate outside and that's always a question that the students and parents ask, why can't we be at our own high school? So maybe this is the start of something, you know, something. So the four tickets that each student gets, those are free of charge?
Yes.
Okay. And it's a, I'm assuming a first come, first served basis? So once the portal opens, it's kind of like summer school or, you know, party passes where it just.
Absolutely. So we're still working out the details of the ticketing system. We currently utilize the ticketing system for all of our shows at the pack and so forth. So we're investigating what that could look like to do it electronically or if we had to utilize another service like we do for our prom, our homecoming and things of that. And we have companies that will be able to do that. And those links and so forth will go through students and student emails as opposed to families and parents, just for the consistency of making sure that we are communicating. So parents will have to definitely be in contact and connection with their student in their email account because a lot of that will run through that to prevent for duplicates and all of the, you know, parent ones, twos, threes, and so forth, getting all of the same email.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Let's just read through the works that they're going to do. So what is there requiring? The biggest thing I would be concerned about, and we've had this happen at others, I mean, even when we're at Northern, is the sound actually working?
I remember that.
Remember that?
Oh, my God.
Kind of, just sort of?
We got Nathan.
Exactly. So, how, are they required to get there just the day of or the day before to make sure that stuff works?
Yes, they will be arriving. We'll do full tests of all of our videos. We are working with Green Screen Productions, who has done all of our D158 todays and so forth. He did our virtual graduation, because we'll have some virtual components to this as well. But we'll test all of our sound and all of our videos and everything on a full run-through on Friday. They'll be up on Friday to do all setup so that it's go time on Saturday.
No problem. That's what, that's all I wanted to make sure is that it weren't showing up at 10 o'clock.
Oh, no. This will be a full, we reserve the field. They'll come up early Friday and it'll be a full day set up on Friday.
Okay.
The other aspect to keep in mind is our neighbors. And we have a plan to communicate with that one of those neighbors. They can spread the word to their community that.
I thought about it.
Yeah.
During the day.
Three hours is enough time for in-between sessions and if we, you know, maybe I can do all the meetings.
Yeah, so we, when we are at the convocation center, our ceremony for 700-plus graduates took an hour and 47 minutes to get them all through. We're doing 250, and we have less of people who will kind of manage some of the traffic of some of the in and out, but we do believe that just based off of that time and not going too late into the evening, to be able to kind of flip this a little bit quicker.
Do you have a question?
Yep.
One is actually the opposite of the rain day, because it may can be unpredictable as far as the sun and the heat. I don't expect it to be an issue, but as far as umbrellas and protecting the sun, make sure nobody out there gets roasted and sunburned. So is that something that's going to be acceptable or?
I mean, we'll look at the details of that. I mean, that's a great, that's a great question.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, we would take the necessary precautions, making sure that our students are hydrated, that we have, yes, some availability, yep. Even if we had to put a bottle of water next to each student's chair just for that, we would do that, absolutely.
And the other thing is actually traffic control in general, getting cars in and out, having the time, obviously funnel people in, but as people are exiting the stadium, getting in their cars to get out, and now you're bringing in the next peer.
getting in their cars to get out, and now you're bringing in the next tier of people
Yep.
that are replacing that in the parking lot. We all know what it's like after football games, trying to get that kind of crowd control and then traffic control.
Yep.
I imagine that's going to be part of this plan.
Yes, we will be working with Adam Dean, who will also work with Huntley as well as McHenry County to look at traffic flow plans. I mean, the fortunate thing about our facility is that we have our student drive on the far east, but we have our main drive on the west. And if we need to reroute traffic to come in one way and go out the other way, just to allow for some of that, we, we can definitely make those arrangements. I mean, we do football games where we have, our stadium can hold 6,000, I believe, Doug, yeah? Something around there.
That's what I was looking at.
But we can hold a lot of people in our stadium and allowing our football games to be, the traffic to be able to move, we'll, we'll figure out the pattern for sure.
Maybe we can get Huntley Community Radio to do a play.
They can sit up on the crows.
That family seating you mentioned, is that assigned seating?
So we're going to look at that as well and what our ticketing system can do and to, again, if we can take as many mitigation procedures as we can, we will, whether it be assigning family groups to certain, to certain sections, and that way we know where, where they are. We have not gotten too deep in those details just yet.
Was what I was thinking through with, when Paul was saying the traffic flow, the human nature being graduation, family, people are trying to get there, get there really early to get us, you know?
Yep.
So, but if you had an assigned seating, you knew it, that might discourage.
Correct. And that is, that is one of, that's definitely one of the pieces on, we were talking a little bit about this earlier this week. We were just able, those pictures that I took of the chairs, we just got that this week. And once we realized how many chairs we were able to do and kind of where it started our wheels spinning and where people would be able to sit, the social distancing markers like we have currently in our east gym for our basketball games when visitors come and what that would look like in our bleachers and so forth. So we are, we're actively looking at some of those details as well.
Perfect.
You know, concert lottery. Actually, one more, general admission. The other thing I was wondering, is there any discussion about utilizing the fieldhouse and having any kind of code circuit screen for people?
For overflow, basically?
Now, we actually will be utilizing our fieldhouse as staging for all of our students. So everything set up, all of our, our student lineup process, which actually at Northern, we utilize their auxiliary court.
Right.
And so we'll be staging students there. Students will, after graduation, will head back into that space to be able to pick up their diplomas and things of that nature. So we won't, we will not be utilizing that as overflow. People will be able to utilize live stream, but just not maintaining different areas. When we bring it in the building, we are still held to that 50 per space and divided spaces and so forth. It wouldn't be conducive to, to them being able to view graduation indoors.
Thank you.
Yep. Lastly, one of, just because I know that there's students watching and parents watching, we are actively too seeking out opportunities for either a senior event or prom. We, we have been in conversation and way back when and have put out some, some calls to see what opportunities we have available. People are still limited to, to the mitigations that the state has required for hotels and banquet halls and businesses and so forth. So right now, we are very limited, but we are actively working with our prom team as well as with our student team. We sent out a survey to all of our seniors to gauge their interest. So utilizing their feedback, we are actively engaged in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think our discussion of 4.3 preempted a little bit of 4.4, which is the graduation agreements. But, Dr. Roof?
Yes, you're right. We didn't, we didn't discuss this a bit, but as you can see, the, the state and supports from inside, I think that the regional services that I've been doing has shared, by the statement of work as well of a quote of $15,100, I would think, for the rule, the revenue board being to fully engage and allow us to take place for our agenda.
Any concerns?
This does not include the, include the rain day or this does include the rain day?
It does not include the rain day. The rain day will be an additional award of $300.
I mean, I honestly think for a three-tiered ceremony and what's taking place, it's pretty, pretty reasonable, actually. Also reminds me how reasonable Northern's cost was.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, no, that's.
Next day, you're going to pay $10 a ticket.
Well, it's a serious, serious center was, was much more.
Yeah, and we had to pay for them.
Good deal. We'll move that item forward as well and turn it over to the finance committee, Mr. Quagliano.
You really, really, really don't?
Yes.
All right, finance committee, on that one, we have payables. Any questions or discussion about those two items? Gentry or Miss Ocretti, are you guys good? Okay, then we'll move that forward to the board meeting. Item 5.2, Mr. Almeyer, he's chapping at the bit all night.
Thank you very much. Is this the 5.2 monthly fiscal update? The only, only one thing to add on this, and it's Senate Bill 1043, that is the PTAL Certificate of Air Bill. Senator DeWitt, just this past week, did enter that bill, and we have a new bill number, so that's good. That bill is Senate Bill 508, and it's sitting in assignments, waiting to move forward from there. It was also picked up in the House by Representative Mark Walker, who also put that bill in, and that's House Bill 448. So that's, that's a first. You know, last year when this went through, or two years ago when it went through, went through the Senate and then went to the House, but it's moving equally on both sides. And that is currently assigned to the Revenue and Finance Committee, so it's already kind of been moved along its, along its way. So, so that's good news there. And by the way, Representative Walker is a Democrat, so that will knock on wood. We hope that will help move the process along as well in the House. So stay tuned on that. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the monthly fiscal updates.
Does anybody have any further questions from Mr. Almeyer on that report? Okay, I know, nothing further on that, Adam? Okay. On the 5.3, which is the Revenue and Expenditures Report, Mr. Almeyer?
Thank you very much. You are looking at the January 2021 Financial Executive Summary. We continue to trend favorably in salaries and benefits, which we have talked about in previous board meetings. One thing to note, on the health insurance side, I did mention this last month, that January at $961,000, almost a million dollars in claims, was by far the largest claim month we've ever had. But there is slightly good news, because in February, I know it's an abbreviated month, but only by a few days, claims have come in and they came in at 661,000. So January just was just an unusually large claim month, but we did have a lot of large claims coming through the pipeline. And we have asked Blue Cross, Blue Shield for a little more detail there. Obviously, they can't give us too much because of HIPAA, but we'd like to see a little more detail as to are these ongoing type of claims, whatever information that they can give us so that we have a better, a better view into the future. But it's a little promising knowing that February came in at 661,000, which by the way is the lowest it's been for the last four months. So again, we're kind of coming back to that June, July claim amount. So that's, that's good news as well. So other than that, if you do look at the dashboard, we've talked, we've talked in previous months about our risk on the revenue side. And the risk on the revenue side, we really have three areas of risk, one of them being Medicaid, the second one being rentals, because we're not allowing rentals in our building during the pandemic. So those are both areas of significant kind of risk on the revenue side. And we also have interest revenue, which is not here. So next month, we will be adding interest revenue to the dashboard so that you can monitor that. And I'm going to talk a little bit about interest revenue when I talk about the budget. So that all being said, we are, we are still tracking with budget and many line items, obviously favorably, but knowing that our kids are coming back and we're going to be utilizing more of our school budgets and building budgets and other budgets, we'll be able to kind of track a little closer to budget by the end of the year. That all being said, we are in the middle of closing February month and now. Once we are done closing February, we will have a little more ability to give you a visual insight into where we think we will end the year. So next month, or at the following board meeting in April, we will provide the board kind of a forecast as where we think we will end the year from a fiscal perspective. So stay tuned on that. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the January Financial Executive Summary.
Any questions? Any questions from anybody on the board concerning Revenue and Expenditures? Okay. Mr. Almeyer's got a large 5.4 here, your budget. Draft one.
Draft one of the budget. Yeah, I figured for draft one of the budget, to kind of give you a glimpse into the draft one and five-year plan, that we'd give you 75 pages of detail and charts and graphs and visuals that you could really kind of dig into. So I, I'll try to get through it fairly quick here, but big picture, you know, I tried to start where we ended last year, right? So each year, we provide you the budget, but we also give you a glimpse into the five-year plan. And FY22 is the first year of that five-year plan, the first year of the forecast. And so what this budget represents is, well, where exactly we left off last year, but we made some material modifications for which, well, we know of, right? And those material modifications include state revenues, right? We heard the budget, we heard the governor and the budget address for which he noted that we're, he's hoping, right, to keep state revenues flat and hold harmless, and there's not going to be an additional 350 million of EBF funds. So with that, there's an adjustment in here that takes away $675,000 of state revenue. So that's a material adjustment. Other adjustments we'll go through over the course of when, when I go through some of these components of the budget summary that you have in front of you. Let me start with this at a very high level, right? The whole year, let me say, the whole year has been, right, a year of uncertainty. And what I'm presenting to you right now is just a little more uncertainty, because there's a lot of things that we still don't know, right? We, the state hasn't finalized their budget. We don't know how we're going to start the school year next year. Do we need more staff to do the things we need to do? Will we continue to need all of the custodial that you're seeing right now, that's baked into the budget right now? So there's a lot of continued unknowns. We'll talk about federal funding, and we'll talk about a lot of different things. So what, at a very high level, I want to start with just the operating results, okay? So the operating results of draft one of the budget, with where we left off last year, plus some adjustments that I'll talk about here shortly, is arriving at these numbers. So we're budgeting 100, the first draft of the budget is budgeting 112.9 million in revenue and 115 million point one in expenses, resulting in a $2.2 million deficit. So that's the number I kind of want you to keep in your head as we go through some of these things. So what am I going to cover? I'm going to cover, well, what are some of the COVID implications, all right? Some of those impacts that are directly related to COVID. Other budget assumptions that we bake into the budget every year. I've already given you a high-level summary, but I'll give you a little more of a summary as to why revenues and expenses are up in various areas. And then I'll follow by, well, what are some future adjustments? And we've already talked about a few of those. And next steps along the way as we go through this process. So let me first start with, you know, financial implications of COVID. The biggest one, you know, well, other than state revenues, is property tax, right? The majority of our, the majority of our revenues come in the form of property taxes. And CPI for this past year, well, that was good. That was at 2.3%, and the board approved the levy at 2.3%. But only half of that levy impacts fiscal year '22, right? And in January, January 15th, on our, about, we learned what CPI was, well, for next year, and that came in at 1.4%. That actually came in a little higher than, than I thought it was going to come in, but it was still lower than what we thought it was last year. And as a result of the pandemic, you know, one could argue, well, that's why CPI came in at 1.4%. So that alone is about a $400,000 impact to revenues every single year moving forward. And for the FY22 budget, because it splits fiscal years, it's about a $200,000 impact, impact. So property taxes is a major impact. Rental fees, rental fees in the budget that you have in front of you are still reflecting that we're going to open up for business. That's about $240,000. We didn't take rental revenues out of the FY22 budget, so that's a risk. Interest revenue. March 16th hit, and March, you know, March hit, April hit, and interest rates, right, the economy tanked and interest rates plummeted. To give you an idea, back in FY19, we generated 1.16, over a million dollars of interest revenue. Last year in FY20, we generated again, almost a million dollars, $918,000 of interest revenue. And next year, if interest rates stay the same, which are less than 10 basis points, we're looking at $50,000 of interest revenue on our balances that we have. $50,000, that's almost over, over a two-year period, over actually a one-year period, that's a million dollar hit to revenue. So that's a big one. Last year's budgeted revenue was only $350,000. That's fiscal year '21, and we will be short on that line item as a result of arguably the pandemic, obviously bringing the economy down and interest rate suffering as a result. There's an upside with National School Lunch, right? Federal funding with the passing of the Summer Feeding Program. We still expect that to continue maybe during the summer months. And as a result of more individuals, unfortunately, with unemployment being a little higher than what it was before the pandemic, we are, we are expecting a $200,000 increase. Right now, a budgeted increase in the National School Lunch program revenue. So that's on the revenue side. So as you can see on the revenue side, we're taking a lot of hits from property taxes, right, to rental fees, possibly. Interest revenue is a big one. State funding, we talked about state funding being hit $675,000. So, you know, that's a lot to overcome. And then on the expense side, you know, the biggest one is COVID supplies and custodial, the things we need to do to keep our buildings clean and disinfected. And as we know, by just recently approving the new ABM contract and adding additional costs that we know that we need to add, even currently, we're looking at that line item to increase about $475,000 for the fiscal '22 budget. So that is what is currently baked into that budget. COVID supplies that were in the FY21 budget, we also carried forward. So we should be covered from a COVID supply standpoint if that happens. Things that are not covered in this current draft of the budget, as I mentioned earlier, would be if we need additional staff, right? So if we need to continue to pay our bus drivers a little more for working more hours, if we need to hire more lunchroom supervisors for supervision, if we need to hire more teachers to cover remote sections, those are costs that are not included in the FY22 budget, because we don't, we don't know those things yet. So that's also a big risk, okay? So with all of those adjustments that I mentioned and the lack of adjustments, we're still sitting at a negative, right, operating deficit of 2.2 million. The budget assumptions, as we do every year, right, we're, we're pretty much locked and loaded on property taxes. State funding, the budget assumption is, well, we're not going to get any. But until the state passes the budget, we can't be certain that they're going to not cut funding. We hope they don't. State categorical funding remains flat. This is also something to note. State categorical funding remains flat within the current budget, but we also know we haven't filed our transportation. filed our transportation reimbursement claim. The good news is the majority of our transportation reimbursement claim, a big portion of that is depreciation on our buses, and we did purchase 14 new buses last year. So I'm hoping a lot of that will overcome some of the salaries that we furloughed and some of the mileage and supplies that we didn't have to purchase. But it is something that we have to monitor is that transportation reimbursement categorical. On the expenditure side, salaries reflect for the five-year period, the collective bargaining agreements, and then obviously flattened out at 3.5% to 4%, whatever they're currently at throughout those forecast years. Property and liability insurance increased 5% a year. We've done that year over year. And technology and equipment and curriculum materials and adoptions continue to reflect last year's, the FY21 needs that they have. Capital expenditures, this is a big line item. Again, we started off the current year where we left off last year. And in accordance with Commissioner Rancosik's deferred maintenance plan, which he presented in August, that document last year and this document that you have in front of you for FY22 reflects a $1.6 million increase in capital expenditures. So that is, right, that's $1.6 million of capital expenditures. If we tone that back and keep capital expenditures for operations and maintenance relatively flat at $2 million, we can bring down some of that operating deficit, but there's still a lot of risk out there that I mentioned from staffing, right, to state funding, to further rental, right, cuts in rental revenue. So there's still a lot of other things that we as a district need to overcome within the FY22 budget. So as a result of all those assumptions, again, we are sitting at a $2.2 million operating. I've already mentioned a lot of the continued unknowns and future adjustments. Let me just highlight a few more that I haven't mentioned. Obviously, I did mention collective bargaining, but we haven't finalized collective bargaining, and that has not been reflected. Special education costs associated with private tuition and room and board, and those are very expensive line items in the millions of dollars, two-plus millions of dollars. So we normally don't finalize those numbers until August when we know what type of private facility and room and board placements that we have. We don't know the additional risks associated with health insurance. I talked about rental revenues and additional hires. I think I've touched upon most of the continued unknowns and future adjustments. The budget timeline, right, over the next several months, we'll continue to provide updates to the board. And as we did in prior year, right, we like to present a number of different scenarios on the five-year plan, best case, worst case, and most approximating today. And so you will see those over the future drafts. Please know that this is just the starting point, right? I did touch upon there are a few opportunities in here, maybe with capital projects and a few other things, but there's also several risks that we have to keep our eye on. And we will, we will help you do that in the course of presenting the budget and the five-year plan moving forward. So again, this is the beginning of a seven-month, eight-month process that I look forward to every year. So we'll continue to do that in the future months. And with that, I know that was a lot of information. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the first draft of the FY22 budget.
Who wants to go first? Go ahead, Paul. I'll let you.
I do have a question, mostly because I don't remember a few things. On the interest income, is this in regards to district investments that we have?
Correct, yeah.
And I know, from what I recall, there are limits on what those investments can be. And I'm struggling to remember, like, they had to be super high.
Well, US-backed, zero risk.
Zero risk.
Yeah.
I think we asked this question a long time ago. Isn't it possible to buy our own debt certificates?
Well, I don't like to hear the word debt certificates because hopefully we don't have or need those or bonds. There are opportunities in the future when we do that, and we've kind of discussed that as part of the debt restructuring plan in the out years, is that may be a possibility. But again, that would not necessarily impact operating results.
Got it, okay.
But it would save our community.
You've got to remember their yields, they've adjusted to whatever market rates are. So, you know, they were issued at certain rates, they've adjusted to market rates.
Also, what percentage of our expenditures are labor expenses? About 75% or is it just?
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to pull that. It's probably buried in here, but it is closer to about 70%.
So when we.
73% as I recall from prior year.
When we pare down the non-labor stuff, as we have done in several years, or the phrase was take the can down the road, there's only so many ways that that can be done before any kind of decision to offset a deficit or pare down such a deficit like what you're mentioning would become affected by labor.
Correct. We've always done the best we can to keep everything, right, so to speak, out of the classroom. You know, we've worked with O and M, we've worked with transportation, we've worked with technology several years, way back in the 2009, 10, 11 timeframe. We worked with curriculum and held off on adoptions and things of that nature, which arguably does impact the classroom, but we tried not to do that. Those are opportunities for us, and those will continue to be opportunities for us in the next few years as we face these challenges of the pandemic, of the economy, of the interest rate, and the low CPI. We need to find a way to continue to keep the impact out of the classroom. We do have, you know, I don't want to say we have the strongest fund balances around because we don't. We have, we have healthy fund balances. We have fund balances that are in line with where we want them to be, and they are there for a reason. So we could, in my opinion, go a few years with budgeting and operating deficit, but we have to be very careful as to why, right? Are we doing it because of a continuing expense increase in labor costs? That's not, right? And that's not a one-time expense.
You wouldn't want to do that on, I mean, you wouldn't want to do it on an operational basis. You'd want to do it on one-offs that you want to do, like doing major rough stuff like that where you are dipping into your replacement reserve, that type of thing, as opposed to your ongoing year-to-year operations matched up to your year-to-year revenue.
Correct.
That's when it starts getting dangerous when, if you're, yeah, recurring and you can't stop the expense level to match up those revenues. It's always okay to kind of, you know, take care of a thing with, that's what some of the fund balance can be used for at times.
Right. Which is also why we established that reserve for replacement, you know, starting back in, I think, 2010, 11 timeframe, right? Another great example of that is we have capital expenditures, operating capital expenditures budgeted for transportation at a million dollars, right? Because we have so many buses in our fleet that are approaching that 10, 11-year mark with hundreds of, hundred-plus thousand miles on them, and they're starting to break down and not making it through the pass lanes. That all being said, we have $7 million plus sitting in fund balance in transportation. And the reason the fund balance is that high was we built up that, that fund balance over the years so that we knew we were going to be in this position to purchase buses. So that is also another opportunity that we continue to do that. But if we were to report results, for instance, of a $1 million operating deficit, and that $1 million represents the $1 million, well, tonight, we're about to approve a bus bid for approximately $1 million, well, that's what, kind of what we want to do because we need to eat down the fund balance of transportation, which we're going to do anyway.
Right.
So I hope that makes sense, but that's kind of the same thing as utilizing the reserve for replacement. That's what the fund balance in transportation is for.
Major capital purchases. Yeah, I agree.
Right.
Correct.
And that take the can down the road concept, academic drive was one of those things several years ago where we went without fixing that problem to get us through some rather lean years as well, when there were, the term that I remember distinctly was dire, or recession was very painful to get through. So we had to make those choices in what we spent on in order to maintain classroom environments as best as we could and on the best of our abilities.
Correct.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm probably doing more talking than asking questions.
It's okay. I wouldn't worry about it.
Go ahead, Joe.
No need to jump in, but.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Tredge. That was going to be my question too, the possibility of dipping into our reserve. But what you said makes sense, and just having a one-off makes sense. So thank you for that. It's probably in here somewhere, but there's so much information in here, I'm just going to have. Does the budget include any CARE Act or coronavirus funding that we're getting separately?
Oh, I am very sorry. I mentioned that when I first started my presentation that I would talk about that. So one, no, it's not, right? S R two, S R one is in the FY21 budget. S R two of 720,000 that we've received notice, that's what the amount we should be receiving for S R two is, is not in the current year budget, and it's not in next year's budget because we haven't received guidance, full guidance as to when, right, when we ultimately need to spend that by and how long we can spend it by. So we're still working on S R two and filing of that grant. And there's also an opportunity with ARP, and it's the Joe Biden $1.9 trillion plan for which, if that goes through, there could be and there should be some additional funding coming to education. That's another opportunity. But those opportunities for additional funding in accordance with the CARES Act or the Biden $1.9 trillion, those, although there's a lot of flexibility in how we spend it, there's really two things that it's for, and it's for, it's for learning loss and it's for, well, it's for COVID, it's for the pandemic type of expenses. So where we could use those dollars aren't necessarily to balance the overall budget. We would use those dollars for, for instance, the $400,000 increase in custodial. We'd use it for the COVID supplies. We'd use it for summer school and other programs to get our kids back to where they need to be. So we have to be careful as how we use it, and we're hoping, I'm hoping, that once we learn all the facts, that we may be able to use this over several years, not just a one-and-done year, because we may need it over the next several years to get our kids back on track. We may need it over several years to cover custodial and pandemic supplies to help us possibly balance our budget. So thank you very much, Ms. Melendi, for bringing that up, that I had that noted here. I did not, I did not say that. So that is another future opportunity adjustment that is not in the FY22 budget. And some of it may, some of it may end up as revenues and expenses in the FY21 budget before the year is over. But right now, based on the timing of filing of that grant, based on the timing of the 1.9 million, more than likely, it's going to fall in FY22.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
In fact, I think you all support takeaway from that, is that those dollars can't just be used quite a lot. There are restrictions, it's like, you know, it's 20% of it must be done on learning loss. So, you know, we can't just spend on that for.
For general purposes, right, yeah. Yeah, they'll be most likely, I mean, anytime it's federal money, it's usually earmarked specifically for certain purposes. So there's always strings attached to that. You know, secondarily, I think, you know, you have to stay conservative in regards to the state and what they can provide. I mean, obviously, I think that we're fine with assuming we're going to get the same amount because I think they're, you know, they'll keep their word on that piece of it. But, you know, I wouldn't expect them to be able to gear up and get education more money unless they just got a boatload of money from the federal government that allowed them to do it. But you've got to remember, their budgets that they did for the current year, presumably were getting, you know, a ton of money from the federal government. I don't believe it's completely come in yet. So that stuff's pretty tense. So that leaves us again with our core, you know, major source, which is our property tax revenue. And, you know, I'm just thinking through going out over the next several years, what that's looking like. And what I don't think you can count on is, you know, a component of how that grows, that levy and money grows to us through new construction growth. There may be some housing that occurs, I think. In fact, I don't think I know, I've listened to multiple real estate people tell us how desirable our district is, has been, and is currently, and that they have long waiting lists for our district for any type of house that goes up for sale. So, but that's, you know, that's a lot of its resale, isn't it, sort of new construction? So, you know, we do have a few developments that are going to.
Just anecdotally, that old share that David Johnson did share, as you heard in the State of Pumpkin yesterday, that our population has grown in Hattie, and Hattie is still one of the top 10 fastest growing.
Communities.
State of Pumpkin. Yeah. Positive, but you're right.
Yeah, no, I think that it's positive, again, the new construction components dependent on new as opposed to just existing home sales turning over. My biggest concern is, again, commercial industrial building growth and just knowing that, you know, I can't imagine anybody's building an office building anytime, any soon right now anywhere. So it's not going to.
Of course, the major development coming to Hattie is, just a portion of the company, the tax dollars for this major warehouse, I mean, Hattie Pumpkin, as they're calling it, is the tax dollars that we won't realize.
Right. So, you know, so what that leaves you is just your normal kind of CPI increases that we're going to possibly have. So it's, you know, it's, you know, you're not going to have these, you know, $5 million jumps in annual revenue every year. It's going to be more along the lines between all those components of two, two and a half million max. And, you know, there's, you know, that, that, at the rate, some of our levels of compensation increase amongst our employment units, it doesn't, as your picture, you know, the picture you painted, it doesn't bode well from a standpoint of a lot of leeway. I mean, there isn't, you've heard, you know, you always get some tax pressure from people about holding the levy and stuff and trying to give taxpayers a break. And sure, we'd love to do something like that, but the reality of doing that is a crippling effect on the district revenue, and it doesn't just affect one year, it affects every year going forward for perpetuity. When you look at doing something like that. So wouldn't you agree, Mr. Altmaier, something along those lines would be pretty irresponsible based on what you're looking at right now?
Well, right. I mean, the majority of our revenue increase this year of $2.1 million is coming from the levy, right? It's coming from the 20, 20 and 21 levy. But to give you an idea, based on our total extension, at a 2.3% CPI, if we did, if we held that flat, well, that's $1.5 million of additional revenue, right? Now, it came in at 2.1 because we have new construction, but the CPI impact, the impact of not, right, approving the CPI increase last year was 1.5 million, next year at 1.4% based on our estimated extension, you know, it's in excess of $952,000, $950,000. And so keeping those numbers in the perspective, that's our increase in revenue that we're relying on. Now, if you just look at salaries and benefits, salaries and benefits for the district approximate $84 million, and we know health insurance is going up, and we know we have contract, right, commitments with our collective bargaining units. And if you use just an average of 4%, and I would argue 4% is pretty low, but if we use 4% because you got health insurance in there at 10, 11 million, that's over 3.4, 3.5 million dollars of an increase in expense with zero revenue to cover it.
Right.
Because the state's not coming through. So the need for passing our levy is pretty great.
Yeah.
And the need for property tax.
There's not really an opportunity in that arena to go forward, and it would be in a situation that we're looking at, I mean, you'd never really seriously consider something like that because it would be crippling for the district. The district would have to, you know, not hire certain teachers, couldn't, couldn't afford to pay them anymore money that, so all those types of considerations is really.
Yeah, 1.5 million, I mean, we're talking 30-plus teachers and classroom sizes would significantly increase, and that's per year because we would have to overcome that every year in the out years. So our out years aren't looking so good now, while they would compound.
They'd compound.
And we would have to continue to cut that many teachers to. To cut that many teachers to recover that, those lost dollars. Right. And, yeah, classroom sizes would grow pretty quickly over two years. Yeah. Yeah, so that would not be a direction that any of us would be looking to go, considering what we're, what we're looking at is our, you know, what's going on in this upcoming budget year and going out in the out years. And again, you do a very good job of laying that stuff out. We've, we've gone along those lines, looking at that, that served us very well as far as where we've positioned ourselves over the years. So, I appreciate the high level of detail you place into these projected budgets. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Altmaier? Sean, anything you want to add? Mr. Altmaier, anything you want to add? No, thank you. Okay. We can move on. I am five point five, strategic goal, operational efficiencies. Well, this is more of a good news type of presentation here. So, this is a strategic planning goal that, you know, we committed to reporting to the board our progress by March fifteenth. I do, I do love this goal. I really do, right? Key performance indicator, four point five outlines a multi-year plan identifying areas of potential increased operational efficiency will be presented by the board, or to the board by March fifteenth. And as part of this goal, we kind of, when we all got together and started working on this as a team, you know, we developed a mission to continue, because here's the main goal that we have, is to continue to drive operational efficiency, well, throughout the whole system. It's not just O and M, it's not just fiscal, it's not just transportation, it's through the whole organization, right? So that we could, we all know that every dollar saved is a dollar that we could keep at this point, to keep in the classroom or put into the classroom when times are good. So, we did that. And based on where we are currently financially, right, I just outlined where we are with the budget, the long-term impacts of the pandemic and everything else that is going on, it's pretty important that we, we look inside, we look internally, and we already do a pretty good job at operating efficiently, but can we do better? And, and the answer is yes, because I think we found a lot of different things by trying to create this culture, and it's a multi-year thing that we're developing, to continuously look internally at how we can do things better. And for the purposes of this plan and mission, we defined operating efficiency as one of the following examples, and you'll see all the examples are very different, and this is noted in the memo, a process, number one, that creates a labor efficiency. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. I gave an example of creating online registration, right? So, it's inefficient, it's efficient for our parents, but it's also efficient for us and saving us some internal labor time. Hard cost savings as a result of a project, we do that all the time within O and M, LED lighting, and we'll talk about LED lighting here in a second. Or internal controls to prevent losses of funds, we need to strengthen our internal controls. I call it leakage. Sometimes you don't know you're losing money unless you put some good internal controls and audit procedures in place to make sure that things aren't slipping out the door that shouldn't be slipping out the door. And then lastly, an operating efficiency would be making sure that we're turning over every stone and looking for revenue opportunities, maybe reviewing and redesigning a process to maximize funding, applying for grants, technology, right, with Chris applying, Mr. Bozinski, Dr. Bozinski applying for that technology grant that very few districts applied for, or Medicaid, the things we're doing with Medicaid. So, those are the things that, that I'm referring to with revenue opportunities. So, operating efficiencies are more than just being a little efficient at what we do, it's really turning over every stone within every department to make sure that we're creating a culture of efficiency. And so, the update we've included as part of your packet here, and I'm not going to, I could spend hours going through this, so I'm not going to. You get. But there are numerous, by department, there are department, things that we are working on for which we are starting to realize savings. And so, I'm just going to highlight a few things for each and every department. Operational efficiency under operations and maintenance, right? We talked about LED lighting, but did the board know that, well, we still had opportunities at Huntley High School, Chesapeake, Marlowe, and here at District Office, the administration building? And so, over the summer, utilizing ABM resources, utilizing some of our internal resources during the pandemic time, we were able to actually complete Marlowe and District Office approximately ninety, ninety-five percent done with LED lighting. So, we are working currently at, what do we need to do with Chesapeake and High School? They have a ballast issue, it's not as easy as just replacing light bulbs, so we're working on getting those done, too. But, but we're looking at, once all of these are done, that will save in energy, cost approximately sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year, which, by the way, when we went solar, we knew about, which is why we only went eighty percent at five point six megawatts of the six megawatts we use. There's building automation, which the board approval, a guaranteed energy savings contract just recently in July. We're doing occupancy sensor audits and reviews, and people are walking through the building to make sure lights are off and that our occupancy sensors are actually working, or we have them. Opportunities in the out years for O and M include, we're going to start looking at our fleets, our O and M fleet, our transportation fleet, is there an opportunity for electric buses utilizing the low kilowatt per hour rate, the solar rate that we're paying to charge those vehicles? And it does look like there's a line of vehicles coming out from Ford that actually are pretty reasonably priced. If you asked me six months ago, I would have said, poof, there's no ROI on it, but it's looking like it may be very, very feasible, so that's something we're working on. Human resources, working on staffing analysis and reviewing our current HR systems, right, to make sure that our systems that we're using today are efficient internally for us, and we could save money internally as well as for our employees. We're making sure we're staffed appropriately, from aides to lunchroom supervisors to teachers and staff across the board. So, Adam's got, Dr. Zaire has his hands full on that one, because that is a very, very big project that he is working on. Within fiscal, we talk about Medicaid free care, we talk about Medicaid private facilities and billing Medicaid for our one-on-one aides that are at private facilities, working with Medicaid-eligible kids. That's something new that we're just doing this year. Most, most districts never thought you could do it because they thought private facilities were collecting their own Medicaid. But private facilities aren't Title One facilities and can't collect Medicaid, so we've identified that as an opportunity for future, for revenue growth on that line item. Transportation, you know, with transportation, obviously, we're continuing to look at propane for our fleet, saving us on, on fuel costs. And the out years, again, I mentioned, looking at our fleet for electric and other things, and they're looking at inventorying supplies and a lot of other things that they can implement with the GeoTab capabilities and the software to help our families be more efficient tracking their kids and us tracking our buses, things of that nature. Technology and curriculum are working on, boy, we've got a lot of software. Chris, we got a lot of software?
We got.
We got a lot of software, and we pay for that software, and we pay for the maintenance on a lot of that software. So, we're doing various, they're working together, working on audits and making sure that we have the right software, and it is the software we want and other apps and cheaper ways to do the things that we're doing today. So, there's a lot of things going on in, in technology as well as curriculum. And special education is currently working on caseloads, caseloads and workloads, right? And work has begun with the workload analysis committee to analyze special education staffing formulas, and as part of that, right, an analysis of campus staffing levels for all services, for related services and teachers, is currently being worked on and will be completed to determine the best use in, best use of staffing allocations as well as to right-size our staff, if that is the case. So, there is a lot of great things in here, I encourage you really to look at it. I know my team was excited when we rolled out this project, we had a brainstorming session, I think every department here had a brainstorming session with their teams outlining what is an operational efficiency. And so, there's a lot of energy surrounding this, so as you can tell, I'm pretty excited about it. Not a huge amount of dollars, but every dollar we save is a dollar that can go into the classroom, or be a dollar that we don't have to take out of the classroom. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on that document.
Yeah, just, oh, sorry. Trying to recall, the goal itself was identifying areas of targeted areas?
Um, I could read the indicator is to create a multi-year plan identifying areas of potential increased operational efficiency.
Okay. And I'm just trying to think of, well, what's kind of the next step as far as how to, you know, some of these will kind of fizzle out as you look deeper into them, some of them will get a mushroom. Kind of what's that timeline and action plan going forward?
Yeah, please know that this is not the full list that was identified. So, each and every department brainstormed and came up with numerous areas of opportunity, and we said, okay, well, we need to prioritize, right? We need to pick off the low-hanging fruit, we need, we need to put our money where our mouth is, what's the bang for the buck type of deal? So, each, it would be double and maybe triple the size of this if we included every single thing. So, there is a long list of things that we will continue to look at and work on. But some of these things are ongoing processes, from workload analysis to staffing analysis to internal controls, right? Well, a lot of these things will become part of the normal, hopefully, culture and process moving forward, isn't it?
Right.
To your point, the things that Mr. Altmaier highlighted were those that seemed the most likely to be fruitful and immediate impact, some of it may have a potential to still need more investigation, we put it second.
Sure. Well, I think there's value, too, in kind of the, like, to your point, Mark, of when things become normal and operational, they're kind of baked into the run rate as you go through time, you know, I think there's some benefit to kind of keep the tracking for some relevant timeframe, whether it's a year, two years, whatever, and kind of keep the enthusiasm and momentum and urgency up around the program, so to speak. So, it's kind of tracked, embraced, and, you know, people continue to be excited about it and kind of keep growing the list.
Right, and I think the intent was, this is one of those goals that shall remain, will remain, right, on the strategic plan, certainly from a fiscal perspective of the district. You know, some of the things, you know, we took off, the district will provide a five-year plan and an operating, balanced operating budget on an annual basis, that was a previous goal. Well, we needed something a little more meaty, knowing that the financial times that we're in, we, we need to dig a little deeper, we could do, we could all do a little better, even though Mr. Runkasik is, we're one of the most, we are the most energy-efficient districts in the state, as you can see, there are still things we can do. Yeah.
So, the one that really caught my eye was the robotic vacuum cleaner.
I saw that. Oh, I wanted to talk about that, but, but we're not, we're not there yet, we are looking into it.
Right. And that actually spurred, the next idea is the same kind of robotic concept for cutting grass.
Yeah.
Which, which you'll see, you know, different properties every once in a while, you'll see, even here in the Huntley area, there's a couple places that I've driven by and seen a little guy driving around in that robotic.
Yeah, on Route forty-seven there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I keep waiting for somebody to drive by and pick it up.
So, I, I went online and completed the product that was discussed in the memo.
Yeah.
That particular robotic vacuum cleaner, that was actually fascinating.
Yeah, yeah, there's.
That was, that was a wonderful brainstorm, and whether it comes to fruition or not, I thought it was a great idea.
Well, we're continuing to investigate that, and, and what we're hoping to do is maybe testing that out at Marlowe, where they do have a lot of carpet, because this is a carpet cleaner versus a floor cleaner.
So, I applaud, I applaud the effort in brainstorming and a lot of these ideas that came out of that, that touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I mean, you guys, I mean, I always think you've squeezed, as much as you can squeeze every, you know, over the years, all these fantastic plans you've come up with, various items, you know, Mr. Runkasik with his, all that lighting and our utility costs, as you stated, Mr. Altmaier, we, we are easily probably the lowest cost on our utilities in the state. It's, again, through no small effort. It just, it's interesting to see, I mean, again, they're, they're, you know, like you said, it might not be the biggest, you know, these massive projects you've done on other things to save us a ton of money over, over time, but these are all taken as a, in whole, they're all fairly significant, and I, again, applaud the effort in setting your goals higher. Like you said, the prior goals were, well, fine, this is a little bit more, you know, given, given everything you have done in the past, this is maybe not a goal to try and continue to squeeze everything you can to, to be able to provide resources to our classrooms. And as I've spoken to our, our employment groups in the past, they said that your guys' efforts have provided the opportunity to, to be able to compensate our, our employment groups to the extent we've been able to address that over the years. So, it's a huge, huge thing you guys do for our district, and I really appreciate it. Thank you for those efforts. Anything further on the operational efficiencies? Okay, we can move on to the transportation bus bid. Love art, you get a chance to talk.
So, annually, in late winter or early spring, the district goes ahead and reviews its, its transportation fleet, similar to the O and M projects or the technology replacement to ensure that we are looking at our fleet, making sure that it is efficient as well as maintained, well-maintained, as Mr. Altmaier has said, but in a fiscally responsible manner. And so, as part of that, seeking that fiscal responsibility, the district went ahead last year and began to secure propane buses. In early February, it was February tenth, we went out to bid for additional replacement buses, we would be looking at, trying to secure eleven seventy-seven passenger propane buses. And on the twenty-second of February, we had two bidders, Midwest Transit and Central States. And if you recall last year, we had a lot of discussion between the two. Both companies had the propane buses, and some had just been around longer than the other, and we went ahead and we purchased ten from one company and four from another to kind of get the feel of how they were, both for ridership as well as the fuel efficiency. And this year, what we found, and I know that we haven't been on the road, you know, for the full year, but we did find that both were proven to be fuel efficient. But one of the things that we did find was that, while the same specifications for the number of passengers on the bus were there, the spacing and kind of that comfortability was a little bit different between the two. One was kind of that tighter fit inside the chassis, the other one had a little bit more room. And so, that was something that we looked at, as well as for the driver, in the Bluebird bus, it's kind of a shorter frame, so that is what makes that spacing different for the passenger, and it was a little bit more difficult for the, a shorter driver to kind of reach that, that brake and all of those kinds of things. So, we looked at that when going out to bid again. And so, what you're going to notice in the bid kind of summary there is Midwest Transit had two bids, very similar in price, the difference between option A and option B were some flooring and lighting options. So, with that flooring, I learned from Brian, what that meant was that different material underneath that flooring part where the students are walking, and then the lighting is, one is standard lighting, the other one is LED lighting. And so, that was that, that small difference between the rates for option A and B with Midwest Transit. And then Central States came in, again, all of these were really very close, the bus, I believe it was just around fifteen hundred dollars difference between the two bids. And so, Transportation Administration kind of looked at those two different things, and while Central States, the Bluebird, was coming in a little bit cheaper, with that, it was the one where for our secondary students, our middle school and high school students, it was that tighter, kind of tighter fit. And so, if you got two high school students sitting in that bus, a little bit more uncomfortability, not a lot of lane room in there. And so, based on that, their recommendation was to go ahead and recommend getting the eleven buses from Central States, I believe, it was ninety-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-three per unit, like you said, that was about fifteen hundred dollars cheaper, oh, no, that was the Central States.
Midwest.
Go with the, it was ninety, ninety-six thousand five hundred and thirty-four for Midwest Transit, which is. for Midwest Transit, which is about the fifteen hundred dollars more than Central State. However, today, Mark and I received an email, um, from Central, uh, Central States, uh, reaching out and saying that they'd seen that the topic was on the board report tonight and did want to share that, um, they provided information during the bid process. They had heard the concerns from Transportation about that spacing, uh, both for the driver as well as in the seats and legroom. And, um, while that concern was raised that they could rectify that, they could, um, change that chassis size about a foot, um, and have the staggered seating. So actually it would be a seventy-eight passenger because they'd have to have an additional seat back there that, uh, the other, um, bus would not have to have. So Mr. Altmaier and I got together, we kind of started talking about this. Um, we, again, this came, um, later in the day, and so we didn't really have time to go back and look at the bid specs, um, to specifically see what was in there to, to find out, is this additional information that they provided violation of the process, all of those kinds of things? We would like to, um, go ahead and recommend that we will still bring this forward to the board, but as an action item rather than a consent agenda so that we could look at that, uh, because it might change to go to that lower bidder if, if in fact all of that information is part of that process and, and whatnot. We want to be fiscally responsible, but also want to make sure that we're not down the road, um, having an issue with, okay, now we need more buses because we can let, put less passengers on there due to the size and, and all of those things. So, um, Mr. Altmaier, am I missing anything from that?
No, I think, uh, that, that's perfect. We, we just want to bring it to the board as an action item and have further discussion internally with the team and, and bring you a revised, if needed, recommendation, um, two weeks, in two weeks.
Their party have no problem, but, uh, question being, so this other option that they contacted you on, has anybody been on that bus to actually ver- verify that that's really the case?
Again, that came just today, so that would be something we'd want to look at. They had that drawing, they had all of those things. While they can change that chassis, I think that would be something we would like to do. And last year, we got additional information, we were able to actually get a bus out here, drive it, all those kinds of things.
Yeah.
Um, that would definitely give us some time to, to really investigate.
Yeah, my, my gut feel is it may be the bus we have today, they just, when they, when they initially sent us the quote, it was with a different chassis than, versus the one we currently have.
It's not the one on the lot, because the one on the lot's that tighter feel, so this would be that they could meet that.
Oh, I got you.
Have an additional seat.
Okay.
And still come in at the same cost that they, um, voted here for.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Which is how they do that.
Yeah.
Totally into the, I mean, it is, yeah, I want to make sure we're not running afoul of any bidding issues.
I was just going to ask that. How does it work with bidding? Is, you know, once the bids are closed and then they, are they allowed to come back?
Well, it all depends.
Well, we don't look at, they said they reached out and sent an email as part of that discussion process. That's that piece that we didn't, um, have a director was out today, so we really couldn't go in and look at what was presented, what was, you know, that email trailer, those conversations. I am not an expert in the bid process. Mr. Altmaier is better at that. We may consult with, uh, Mr. Runkasik, who's really good at that, to make sure that we are following all those, because we would not want to break that. That's one we can't.
Yeah, I would. Right, so I, yeah, I'm, that's fine. Why don't you guys circle the wagons back on that? Um, yeah, we, obviously, I would recommend, yeah, we don't accept anything to go to consent right now and let you guys work that out. And if you come up with a viable solution, bring it as an action item on, uh, the March Board meeting. Everybody good with that? That's what we'll do then. Okay, thank you. Um, we can get out of finance and move on to human resources.
All right. Uh, single, adjourned item six dot one, human resource update, Dr. Zir.
Yeah, just, just a brief update from human resources. Um, March is the month where, um, we have a lot of state code looming dates, so, um, I have those dates, uh, in that memo, um, for everyone to review. And when it comes time for non-renewal reduction of force, we have deadlines we have to meet if we choose to do that. And any of those items will be brought forward at the March eighteenth board meeting, meeting for action. Um, we continue to plan, as Mr. Altmaier said, um, staffing for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Uh, as we know, a lot of that, um, may be up in the air, um, depending on the state, um, guidelines and what have you. So, um, we feel that we, you know, will be ready, um, you know, no matter what those guidelines, uh, may be, whether it's back to something normal, whether it's something we're living in now, um, we'll definitely have, um, the staff ready for it.
Good. Any questions from anyone? All right. And, uh, wrap HR. Building's down, Mr. Troy.
Good evening. Uh, few items to just highlight with the O and M updates. Actually, one didn't make it, uh, I just learned in the last few days that, um, the chiller that provides air conditioning for this building, which is on life cycle for FY twenty-two for replacement, uh, requires a major repair right now. Fifty percent of its, uh, ability.
Using the AC lately?
We are not using it tonight.
I know.
Uh, no, we actually, um, and, uh, and the cost of the refrigerant, that generation of equipment back from two thousand four, five, which we have a lot more of in the district, which is, uh, R twenty-two it's called, that CFC is, uh, on a major phase out by the EPA and it's reached, uh, almost the end of its rope. Uh, the cost of a thirty-pound canister of that refrigerant gas, uh, a few months ago would have been a hundred twenty-five dollars. Five years ago would have been twenty-five dollars. Uh, we just got a report the other day, we get solicitation from suppliers once in a while about, here's our great deal we have for you. The new great deal is five hundred and thirty-eight dollars a canister, because it's, the, the phase out is almost coming to the end. Um, and so to spend what could be like thirty-five, forty percent of the value of that piece of equipment, which is seventeen years old, it's not that far from the end of its life, we highly recommend that we avoid that and just go ahead and move it up and get it replaced. And, um, in order to do that and make sure that when we get to the deepest part of the summer, that maybe we can have adequate cooling in this building, uh, I'm recommend, I'll be bringing back a, an action item at the regular meeting later this month to approve a pre-buy on the actual equipment and the factory startup. And we have an, uh, engineer architect working in the background, put together bid specification for all the field work involved in doing so. We do have, uh, on the, on the life cycle report over the next ten years, we have a burden, uh, a, a, a recommended burden of three point six million dollars to continue to phase out that type of vintage equipment in this school district that's, uh, R twenty-two. Um, and, uh, we'll just have to see how the future fiscal years roll out to see if we can afford to keep continuing to do that. But if we don't, uh, I don't see the cost of this refrigerant, uh, going anywhere but up, 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 and it'll be more expensive to continue to, uh, do repairs. On a, on a brighter note, um, last month you asked about how's our solar doing? And there's information there for you. Um, this is not a complete picture of the savings, uh, it's, and I continue to have dialogue. I think I found someone now that might be able, that's taken a deep look at our electric, uh, utility invoices. I've given you a summary sheet that shows the value of this supply portion, not the demand savings.
Right.
Uh, and, um, and, and for the winter months, that's not bad. We're doing pretty darn good for winter. Um, and, uh, we'll do much better in the summer. Um, and you'll see it.
Now the sun's out, actually.
Uh, we actually produced three hundred and fifty thousand kilowatt hours last month in the coldest month of the year with that snow almost every day, so we did pretty good. Um, you'll see that there's a page in here that shows, uh, it, it, it's kind of hard to read in small print there, but that's, that's the kind of analysis I do of the bill every month. Uh, you'll see there's an alternative column I put in there, what if it's solar? And if somebody wants to walk through that in detail, I'd be happy to, uh, walk through that with them, but I suspect you don't want to do that here tonight.
All right.
But, uh, it, we, we, I took the bill and I recalculated based on if we didn't have solar, uh, what would it cost us? But I, but I'm, I don't have the wherewithal, the understanding and the knowledge to do the, uh, to do the demand savings piece. Um, so, so I'm continuing to work through that, but it's more than what you see there, I'm sure. Some, some even better news, uh, we did, even in this COVID environment where we did abandon some of the major control strategies that produced most of the energy savings that we, uh, have realized over the last decade, eleven years actually. Um, demand control ventilation has been abandoned in the pandemic. Uh, we've had some really big changes at occupancy levels. Um, and when we went to get recertified for Energy Star, uh, it was a struggle. And, uh, but we were able to bring two buildings in for twenty twenty-one, uh, EPA Energy Star recertification. Um, Chesek, uh, has be- better performs than a buildings of its type in the United States, uh, better than seventy-eight percent of them. In the case of Marlowe, Marlowe performs better than eighty-eight percent of them. So we're doing really good still in those buildings. We've got a third building, uh, they're asking technical questions, auditing it. We've got some information out to tech department right now. They want to know how come we have so many computers and so little people, sort of questions, things like that, you know, relative percentage wise, but, uh, a little things like that before they'll make a final determination. There are more news to come on that. Um, lastly, just an update for you, the LED lighting, Mark talked a little bit about is done. Kitchen demand control ventilation, part of the latest energy conservation initiative. We were given notice, they're substantially complete. I've scheduled, uh, a tour with our Director of Food Services to go around and actually see that they don't have any, uh, awkward situations with operation of the equipment under those hoods and, which means we'll need to do some tuning. Uh, and we've commenced conversations with our partner, CTS, in this project on, on the next phase, which is to replace the, uh, the vintage, uh, digital controllers and install a demand load shedding software on our front end. Uh, Mark's, for, Mark's, uh, information did, do some, uh, mention of that as well. Last thing I want to bring up, the high school fine arts project, haven't talked much about it lately, we're down to less than one percent of the project to be paid out. Uh, there was a bill that came across my desk I signed off on today. Uh, one trade is yet to have final closeouts acumen in our possession, uh, so we can, uh, release that final, it's point six six, point zero six six, it's a real small portion, but we're almost done. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, I, I do have a question off the bat. Um, on that chiller, are there any energy incentives through the state for picking something that might be more energy efficient versus something that's not?
I, um, I spend a lot of time on that because, I always do, when it comes to replace a piece of, and looking for opportunities. And, um, unfortunately, this chiller is a very little chiller and it doesn't have the industry improvements that other, that the bigger ones do, like we've replaced some two hundred and twenty-five ton chillers that have a lot better opportunity. They've got more efficient, uh, operation of them with all kinds of enhancements. Uh, four, three hundred and fifty-ton chiller and a four hundred-ton chiller at the high school we've done in recent years. And there's a lot of reward available for that. For this one, there is some reward, there is an improvement in efficiency, but it's below a threshold where the, the opportunity ramps up significantly. I've talked to my comm ed rep, I've talked to my clear results cohort coach, I've called, uh, I've called our, uh, designer to look around and see from other manufacturers what efficiency opportunities exist, and he was able to pull another couple thousand dollars out of it. But it looks like for this little ninety-ton chiller, the, uh, energy incentives that we'll try to get gather, I mean, the incentives from the utility for efficiency are to the tune of maybe five thousand, fifty-three hundred dollars, something like that.
While we're looking for those operational cost efficiencies, I remember that, that being the case from, from other stuff like you said, that we've replaced previously, so. Thank you. Uh, any questions from the committee or the board?
That's for me.
All right, thank you for those O and M updates. Uh, seven dot two, Fox Valley Fire, uh, inspection service contract.
Regulatory requirements, uh, and life safety codes require us to inspect our life safety systems to make sure they're fully functional every year. Uh, we had a bundled service contract we've had, uh, in existence for, for, for quite a number of years now, um, where we bundle, uh, fire sprinkler system inspections, and there's different kinds. There's the one-year inspection, the three-year inspection, five-year, twenty-five-year, fifty-year, but we're, we're, we're not talking about them right now. Next year's a one-year inspection only. Fire sup- uh, fire suppression systems in the kitchens, uh, we've got fire extinguishers, a lot of them. Uh, fire alarm systems have to be inspected every year. Our leadership doesn't like false alarms on the fire alarm, so we, we, we actually have built in our fire alarm service contractor, the contractor has to clean all the smoke detectors every year, uh, too, to try to help us minimize that. Um, and, uh, we have a contract with, uh, Fox Valley Fire right now. Uh, we do have an opportunity to renew that and their offer for a one-year, uh, extension is, uh, is minimal. Um, we would recommend that that be extended with them. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, any questions from the committee or the board? All right, any objections from the committee for moving us forward now?
Moving forward.
All right, we'll go ahead and move that forward. Thank you, Mr. Runkasik.
All right, eight point one, legislation update, uh, as Mark mentioned earlier, um, still waiting on the Biden one point nine plan. Um, as of March fourth, there's four thousand new House bills and twenty-seven hundred Senate bills, and seven hundred of those are directed, uh, towards public schools. Uh, just, uh, I'll give you the top four, kind of reading through them. Um, HB seven, the push for forced consolidation, the goal would be to consolidate by no less than twenty-five percent, uh, making it more of unit districts rather than school districts. HB eighteen, flexible, um, flexibility on teacher evaluation. Uh, the teachers would have to be rated an excellent or proficient, um, in order to, you know, pass through those or change the type of evaluation that it is. Um, HB twenty-one, loosening pension restrictions on subteachers, which would help with the shortage of the subs. And HB forty, um, allow special education services through the end of the school year the child turns twenty-two. Those are, those are probably the top ones that were talked about. I don't know if you have any other additional?
The only other guy I have, however, who you kind of already said, this, this sheer volume, it can be a very active, uh, general, you know, of that way. Count, you know, top of all of those cases, of course, we've got good partners down in the town, so it's very informative, we need to begin advocating, so we've got strong relationships with our, our legislators in state and we'll definitely do a little bit of that.
Okay, that takes us to nine, Board of Education.
Okay, um, we have some minutes, um, listed there from a few meetings in February, so is there any questions on those minutes? Um, Matt will push that forward to the board for approval. So we'll move on to item ten. Um, we do need to go into closed session, uh, again, uh, so I'll make a motion to move into closed session at nine forty-seven. Do we have a second? Second from Mr. Mayorino, uh, we have roll call.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Barliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayorino?
Yes.
Mr. Cranny?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Okay, on a closed session. Okay, on closed session.
Okay, we're back in open session from closed session. It is 10:52. Can we have roll call?
I'm Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mr. Garan. Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Partley on it.
Here.
Mrs. Malaney.
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Here.
And I'm Mr. Trander.
That's good. Okay. Item 12 is public comment. I don't believe any further public comment has arrived. So we're on the 13 which is adjournment. So I'll make a motion to adjourn at 10:53. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mrs. Meyerino. This is a voice call. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.